... edition of Council Countdown. My name is Chloe G. and I'm joined today by Hannah Nichols. And we are going to be giving you guys a special behind the scenes look. So Hannah, what can you tell us about what we're going to see today?
Well, first of all, thank you to everyone who's joining us this morning. We appreciate you taking a look at the important things that are happening right here in Beaufort County. This morning, Beaufort County Council members and administration are going to be rolling up their sleeves and getting into the nitty gritty of what makes the county work. They're going to be discussing the performance of previous goals. They're going to be talking about their collective vision and their strategic goals moving forward.
Sounds like it's going to be an awesome event, getting to plan and kind of figure out what we're going to be doing in 2024.
It should be an exciting morning.
Well, we do have some events coming up around the county. And the first one is going to be the Free Electronic Recycling Event this Saturday, February 10th. There's going to be two locations available for county residents from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. South of the Broad residents can head over to River Ridge Academy at 3050 Raider Drive, and residents in the northern region can head to Beaufort County Public Works on 140 Shankland Road. Items that will be accepted include personal computers, laptops, CRT monitors, LCD monitors, CRD televisions, non-CRT televisions, printers, hard drives, and miscellaneous electronics like cell phones, tablets, and fax machines. We are not going to be accepting microwaves, vacuums, stereos, speakers, DVDs, lamps, or other household electronics. If you are wanting to attend this event, please make sure you stay in your car. Our staff will come up to you and unload your electronics, all for you. This is available for residents only, and commercial waste will not be accepted at this event.
That sounds awesome for the residents here. And speaking of Beaufort County's Solid Waste and Recycling Division, I would like to congratulate that department. They were just awarded a grant for $273,000 from the United States Department of Agriculture's Composting and Food Waste Reduction Program. This grant will help the county create a pilot program that encompasses a multi-phased approach to composting. It should include a pilot project study, an education and outreach campaign, and then they're going to actually have the diversion of food waste and other organic materials. The program's goals are to increase education efforts regarding organic waste reduction and increase compost participation. So we're super excited to start that project in July with actual implementation beginning in spring of 2025.
That is going to be awesome. But, moving on, everybody knows it is tax time. The Beaufort County Library is continuing their free tax preparation assistance to Beaufort County citizens who qualify. This program is available to help persons earning $63,398 annually or less, differently-abled persons, and those 60 and older. The Low Country Volunteer Income Tax Assistant Program is offered in collaboration with the Beaufort County Human Services Alliance and United Way of the Low Country. For more details or to schedule your appointment, visit AARP.org/money. Coming up, including our schools, which covers many different schools throughout Beaufort County, from elementary all the way up to high school. We also have Live, Work, Play. They just released a new episode covering oyster shell recycling. Festive Beaufort is also coming up, and we just covered the Oyster Roast that was held downtown. And then there's also Low Country All-Stars hosted by me, which is covering several different sporting events throughout the county. So yeah, a lot of exciting stuff coming up, and we are hoping to be able to find a different show that anybody can enjoy.
That sounds amazing. Why have Netflix when you've got BCTV? Now, for those of you who may just be tuning in, we would like to welcome you once again to today's Beaufort County Council Retreat. It is February 6th. Council members are going to be here the whole day digging into their strategic goals for the next year, working on actionable items for individual departments, and defining the vision for our county. So we'd like to thank you for taking this in-depth look with us today.
I think that's going to do it for our broadcast today, because we do have a little, couple more things that we have to get tweaking before we can start with the meeting. But me and Hannah both want to thank everyone for tuning in, and we hope there's a lot of good to come out from today.
Thank you, guys.
... treat Tuesday, February 6th. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Will the clerk please hold the roll?
Councilmember Reitz?
Here.
Councilmember Howard?
Here.
Councilmember Dawson?
Absent.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Tavernick?
Present.
Councilmember Dawson is absent. Councilmember Glover?
Absent.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Absent.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Here.
Vice Chair McKellen?
President.
Chairman Passamit?
You have a pardon.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of today's agenda? Ms. Howard makes the motion. Mr. McKellen makes the second. Do the motions and seconded, if there are any questions. Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Okay, item number five is the opening remarks and presentation by me. Good morning. All of you have received this PowerPoint, and I hope you went through it. I'm now going to translate it for you. For some of you, this is your first opportunity to deal with the budget process. For others, we've been through this numerous times, numerous ways. We're going to approach this a little bit different this year. A budget is a spending plan, we know that. It is much more. We're going to talk about a regional approach to budgeting. I have been working with colleagues in the other six counties in our region about what we need to do. So we begin today with Beaufort County. What do we stand for? What do we think about the future? So we start with our vision statement. And it says, "Beaufort County will continue to be one of the most desirable places in the United States to live, work, and enjoy a sense of community in a culturally diverse coastal setting." From that, those three words that were highlighted, we changed one to "play." And "live, work, and play" became our motto as we built out budgets for the last several years. We're going to continue that, but we're going to add that to that. Our mission statement. Beaufort County Government exists to serve the people of the county in a cost-effective manner, so all our citizens may enjoy and appreciate protected quality of life, natural and developed resources in a coastal environment, a diverse heritage, and economic well-being. This is what Beaufort County has their vision and their mission. That's not to say that that's the same throughout our region. That's not to say that our municipalities have a slightly different take on vision and mission. And so, we have to take a look at the future. How do they all blend together? Well, let's take a look in the future. Is this our region in 30 years? We sure as heck hope not, okay? I thought you'd get a kick out of that one. You liked that. Yeah. Okay. This is not what we want. Okay, so where do we go and how do we get there if this is not what we want? So I have created the Year of the Seas. In the center is the quality of life. The quality of life is what you believe, because the quality of life is the quality of life in our region, which is the southern part of South Carolina. The quality of life is Beaufort County. The quality of life, if you live in a municipality, is what that municipality has, or your own neighborhood. But the quality of life, I believe, is affected by all of these seas. This is the Year of the Seas. Pick any one of them, and they're going to have an impact on the quality of life we believe we have and what we want. We have to be creative. There are changes coming. We're going to continue with things. Conservation is going to be an extremely important part. We have choices, chances, you see all of those. Do they all work at once? Sometimes. Do they all work independently? For sure, because one builds upon the other. So what didn't we have? Jared started this, and I picked up on this. Now, the reason I chose Sun City did not exist 30 years ago, not because I lived there, but because the uniqueness of Sun City. Anybody want to guess how unique Sun City is? No? Let me tell you. When Sun City was created, it crossed boundaries. It now said, "We're going to have a regional impact," because it sits on 278 between Beaufort County and Jasper County. It affects people who live on the north side. They live in Jasper County and the city of Hardyville. So there's a different tax structure. There may even be differences in the way they approach things. But that was a key to how our region was going to be over the next 30 years. Look at some of the other things. There was no exit eight on I-95. It was called 278 at one point in time. You had to get off 462 to get there. That was the next one, exit 28. You got off there, you came down to 170, you went 170, onto Hilton Head. South Carolina 170, that road was just a two-lane road. There was no Paris Island Gateway. There was no Cross Island Parkway. The roundabout at Seapines blew everybody's mind because it was brand-new. There was no Bluffton Parkway. Was this a great area to live 30 years ago without all of those? Yes, it was. But we needed those things as our needs and wants and growth continued. So we have them all. Do they work? No. Why? Because they've reached their functional capacity life. Is it a great place to live today? Sure as heck is. And COVID certainly proved that. We did not have the downturn that other areas had. Will it continue to be the great place to live in the next 30 years? Yes. But there will be all of those seas that we have to deal with to ensure that the quality of life that we have now remains the quality of life in 30 years. Okay. So what should we focus on over the next several years? Some say 30 years is too long. Well, we're talking about putting in a new law enforcement center in the center of the county that will service for the next 50 years. So 30 years isn't necessarily too long, but it is some sort of point that we need to discuss. So I believe here are our areas of focus. Obviously, transportation, healthcare, education, parks and recreation, housing, tourism. We're big on the military, safety and security, trash and recycling, our utilities, and our environment. All of these are a mix in the quality of life we have. So now, I'm going to spend some time telling you, okay, what do I think about the next 30 years? Just my thoughts. And then we'll determine, do I know what I'm talking about? Should we move on some of these things? Which ones? What order should we be doing them in? So let's talk about transportation. Roads. We said our roads, 170, 278, 462, 21. All of those roads have three things in common. They're all in Beaufort County at the beginning, but they don't end in Beaufort County. Number two, all of them are now failing. They can't meet the capacity necessary. And number three, and probably most important, they're all our evacuation routes. If we have a natural disaster, a hurricane, or some other catastrophe that says we have to get 200,000 people out of the county, these are the roads we have to get them out on. That's a problem. Okay. Bridges. Over the course of time, the Hilton Head Island Bridge will be completed. In the next 30 years, we might have another bridge to St. Helena. We might even have a bridge to Defuski Island, and we won't ever have to deal with the ferry again. All possible. They're only impossible until they become possible. Our airports. Our Hilton Head Airport is under renovation at this point in time. We're modernizing it. But the Hilton Head Airport has a problem. It has fixed boundaries. It cannot grow. It's in a neighborhood. So while we will modernize it, it's never going to get bigger. But there are two airports around us that I believe will become significant, probably three, I'll deal with the third one last, that will have a significant airport function. First and foremost is the Savannah-Hilton Head International Airport. Why is it an international airport? Because it does have a flight to Toronto. And anytime you go out of the country, you can be called an international airport. I believe, over the next 30 years, that Hilton Head, because it does have the capacity and space, it's truly going to become an international airport, whereby you can go to Savannah-Hilton Head Airport and fly to any of the major cities in Europe. Rome, Paris, places like that, Zurich. And then from there, you can go anywhere else in the world. How do I think that's going to affect us? Because our area is so beautiful, our area is so wanted, that the international companies are going to fly their executives from wherever in Europe they are to Hilton Head to come to their corporate offices in Beaufort County or the surrounding counties. When will it happen? Don't know. Is it possible? Sure it is. Do we need to think about that? Yes, we do. The Beaufort Executive Airport, a jewel. I believe that in 30 years, that's exactly where we're going to have our flying cars parked. Why? Well, we have a company from overseas that has its headquarters here in Beaufort County. They have already gotten FAA approval to begin building flying cars. Is it possible that we could have them in this area? Sure. Is it possible they could be there? Sure. Should we plan for it? Maybe. That's up for us to make that decision. There's one other airport. That's the Ridgeland Airport. Ridgeland, I believe, over the next 30 years, because of the way things are going to happen in our region, may be truly a regional airport. They have the space, the runway length, to bring in bigger planes. Now, why do I think these are going to happen? Look where our international airports are now. Atlanta, busiest airport in the world. Over the next 30 years, I can't believe that it can get much bigger than it is now. You have to go to Jacksonville, you have to go to Charlotte, four hours, four hours, almost three hours away. Our population is going to continue to grow. Those services are going to be needed, and that's why I believe airports are going to be like that. So let's talk about rail. CSX and Norfolk Southern are the cargo carriers. Amtrak carries the passengers. It says down, I'll talk about the ferries, but in order to support the ferries, to support the port that's coming, you need rail. CSX and Norfolk Southern are going to have a distinct impression on our region, building more rail capacity. Do I believe that Amtrak is going to have a greater presence over the next 30 years? Yes, I do. Because the need is there. The only place that served Paris Island for the last 100 years was Yemse. That's where the train station was, to serve all those soldiers. The next one is Savannah. I believe in between, there will be an Amtrak line on I-95, the way it's going to grow. Okay. Bus, Palmetto Breeze is our bus company. I believe they will continue to grow and serve the needs of our communities. Ferry system. Over the next 30 years, we will have a comprehensive ferry system. Are we going to be in the ferry business? The answer is no. We don't want to be in the ferry business, but we do want to have the private companies be able to do that. Can you conceive of 30 years from now, a complete ferry system that comes out of Savannah, going to Defuski Island, Hilton Head Island, Tybee Island, city of Beaufort, Port Royal, and all stops in between? It does two, actually, it does three things. It creates a whole new industry that serves the ferry system. It creates a better tourism industry, because you fly into Savannah-Hilton Head, go over to the ferry, and go wherever you want. And, by the way, the ferry system will allow us to take traffic off the roads. Can you imagine, if you live in northern Beaufort County, you pick up the ferry in the city of Beaufort, and you go to Hilton Head Island, because that's where you work, and it takes you 20 minutes, not the hour, coming 170 to 278 to get to the island? Ports. I believe, over the next 30 years, we will have the Savannah Port. It is not going to be our port to replace the current port. It is going to be a conjunction with them. Will we need some vision about that? I believe so. I think we're going to have to do something like has been done in New York. It's the New York-New Jersey Port Authority. They handle the ports there. They handle the ferry system. They handle the airports. They handle the buses. They handle the bridges. They handle the roads. I think in the future, we may see that. But I think that's coming sooner than later. I also believe, in the next 30 years, that we may have cruise ships stop here. What size cruise ship? Remains to be seen. But I think that this is a destination. Can you imagine, if you have international flights to Savannah-Hilton Head, you come and then you pick up your 600-passenger boat to go around this area? Finally, other, now that doesn't show up so well, but there are other means of transportation. Our two-wheel and four-wheel transportations. Bicycles, mopeds, motorcycles, golf carts, and the greatest invention right now, e-bikes. I think those are modes of transportation that we're going to have to deal with. Is one of the seas that we have to deal with, and that's going to be codes, laws. What do we do about e-bikes? We're talking about trails and putting bicycles and golf carts and people on our trails. What about e-bikes? They're motorized vehicles. They have two types of e-bikes, one that'll go less than 22 miles an hour and one that goes above 22 miles an hour. We're going to have to deal with laws that change how we deal with them. So that's what I believe is the vision of transportation. Next, see if I can do it. I did it. Healthcare. Healthcare is a big thing. If you have, and these are all of our healthcare providers here. If you have a knee replacement, we can do that. If you need a hip, we can do that. Shoulder. If you have other serious illnesses, you have to go out of county or out of state. As our region continues to grow, I think the demands are going to be there. As our region continues to grow, I think the demands are going to be there. I think we need a Level One, Two, and Three Trauma Center. Level One is the most. It is one for the very seriously ill and very seriously injured. Two, less so. Three, less so. There are all kinds of needs that we have in the way of healthcare. But if we are to be what we want to be, healthcare is going to be an extremely important part of what we do in the future. By the way, we need training centers and laboratories. When you go for a blood test, LabCorp, your doctor's office, wherever, guess what? There's no labs here that do those tests. They're all sent out. And then the results come back. Okay, education is the next on the hit list. Education. We have USCB, TCL. The schools in both Beaufort and Jasper County, private schools, charter schools, and our library system, because that's an educational part of our system. We have one of the finest library systems. I believe over the next thirty years, we started USCB. B for Beaufort. We, the taxpayers of this county, funded that to where they are now. The state is finally just getting involved in paying their fair share for our USCB. I believe that they, it's a four-year institution now. I believe that they're going to have professional degrees, graduate degrees, doctoral programs, all of those over the next thirty years because they may become, may become one of the crown jewels of the USC system. I believe that our schools will improve over the course of time. You see what our Beaufort County schools are doing. You see what they're trying to do in Jasper County. I believe all of those will be improved over the course of time. And as I said, our library system here is second to none. Parks and Recreation. We learned something very interesting during COVID. We found out that people were so cooped up, they had no place to go, but they found a place to go. It was our parks. They were big, they were beautiful, and they had some problems. And they told us what those problems were. And we have put together a Parks and Recreation Program. It's over a hundred million dollars with the needs over the course of the next thirty years or so to get all of those done. But the demand is there. We have several parks right now, but they aren't a park yet. They're a piece of property that we've designated as a passive park. We just have not developed it into that passive park. Will we need active parks? Yes, we will. Will we need other areas like that? Yes, we will, over the next thirty years. We will have to find a way to do that. Obviously, if we fix our roads, they will come. Obviously, if we have parks, they will come. Remember, it's live, work, and play. If we have people live here, they want to work here. And certainly, people want to play here. Tourism is huge. Next is housing. We know we have a housing problem. We've had it for a long period of time. We now want to talk about housing. We want to talk about affordable housing. We want to talk about workforce housing. We need to define what we mean by both. Affordable housing, in my mind, is housing that has an AMI attached to it. And then we have to decide, what is that AMI? Is it thirty, forty, fifty, sixty? Does it go up to a hundred and twenty? How do you put that in a development agreement? How do you deal with that kind of housing? Workforce housing is something different. Workforce housing may be, in fact, that you have a community set aside, thank you, set aside where you define what the workforce is that you want there. And so you can have specificity. Well, this particular development is by this school. This school needs all of those teachers. I'm going to have so many houses, apartments, whatever, set aside specifically for teachers. Or my restaurant workers, or my people who work in Parks and Recreation. It doesn't matter what we call that. It's do we have housing at every single level for them? And Hilton Head Arts Center, that's going to need to be expanded. Do they have the room to expand it there? I don't think so. I think we're going to have to look for another venue for them. Okay, obviously, if you live, work, and play here, one of the big things that we have, because we're a large employer, is we have a lot of people who have children. There are industries out there. One of the finest one is SAS. They have a complete daycare system for their workers. And their workers stay there. They fight to get jobs there, and they stay there for their entire career because they know their kids are going to be well cared for. I don't want to be in the daycare business, but I want to have opportunities for daycare for our workers. I have said this, and it is not a knock on our educational system, but Beaufort County controls when we open and close. Why? Because they have to close at times. Certain weather conditions, uh, certain days where they do in-service training, so on and so forth. When they close, there are several of our staff members who are working, who have children, who do not have a place to have their kids. That becomes a problem. We need to fix that over time. Will we have more gated communities? Sure. Will we have more fifty-five and older communities? I think so. Some say that our age of Beaufort County has now crept up to sixty-two years of age. I know that in other counties, the average age is forty-three. So that's a unique thing. And certainly, when we're putting up housing, we're going to think about walkable communities. Next on our list is tourism. Tourism is huge. How will it be over the next thirty years? I'm going to give you an example. In New Zealand, Christ Church was where all of the boats stopped on the way around there. Christ Church had an earthquake that destroyed all of the dockage. They told the cruise lines, oh, we're going to rebuild it. Year one, two, three, four, five. Six years later, they hadn't done anything. In the meantime, they had an emergency port on the other side. Oh yeah, they could still go to Christ Church, but now they had to take a bus. And it was an hour. So they altered what they did. Year seven, they told the cruise lines, listen, it's only going to be three years to rebuild the ports, and so then you can come back. And they said, we're doing just fine here. So what we have to be careful about is, are we doing just fine? Or do we have to make some changes? Are there some things that we have to do? How many times do you go to a place before you say, uh, maybe I should go someplace else? That's the rub, if you will. Do we have the hotels that are demanded? Do we have the five-star hotels? Case in point, several years ago, the South Carolina Association of Counties had their convention in Hilton Head. The day we were there, the air conditioning broke. They literally had to cancel everything that day because the rooms we were going to have the classes in were over a hundred degrees. The people in the hotel, who were paying five hundred dollars a night, their rooms were in the high eighties at night. A lot of people were very upset. They couldn't fix it in the three days we were there. They couldn't promise, promise that it would be fixed when we came back, and the South Carolina Association of Counties left. And they haven't been back since. So I believe that it's going to continue, that we're going to find the ways to have the people coming. As I said, if we have a ferry system, I think tourism increases. We have almost three million and more coming to Hilton Head every year to visit. You know how many people come to Savannah? Nine million. That's twelve million people that come to this area. Can you imagine a ferry system that can bring those people from Savannah to the city of Beaufort, Port Royal, to Fuski Island, uh, Bluffton, you name it? We'll be better off doing that. We have a rich culture here. We have a whole concept that we are missing out on, and that is the Santa Elena. That was founded in the fifteen hundreds before Jamestown in this area. That has yet to be expanded. So those are the things that we need to talk about in tourism. Next on my list is our military. MCAS Marine Corps Air Station. Vital. It is where we house the F-35s, the most sophisticated plane in the world right now. It is destined to have about seventy-eight of them housed at Marine Corps Air Station. It replaced the F-18. And they do dogfights with the training. The F-18 goes out. It goes like this, and they leave seven minutes before the F-35 comes out. The F-35 takes off and he immediately goes straight up, catches him in the next five minutes. That's the difference in that aircraft. We're going to continue that. Marine Corps Air Station is a vital part of our group. So is Paris Island. So is the Naval Hospital. The Naval Hospital is going to move where it is to another location. Exactly where? We think we know, but that's to be determined. And we think we have an idea of what's going to happen to the Naval Hospital property there. That's something that we're going to have to take a look at for the future. And work with our military. Our military wants to work with us. The new commander has said he has to go by government regulations. So the proverbial, you know, hundred thousand dollar toilet? He wants to work with us in Beaufort County. Well, his roads need to be paved. Why would he bring in a government contractor when he could do local contracts? So we're working hand in hand with them. As they leave the military, we want them to be retrained for the jobs that will keep them here. Next. Certainly, we need people to be safe and secure in our region, which is why all of those police forces are vital to the security and safety of our region. Which is why we're going to have a centralized law enforcement center where we take everything that he has scattered and put it in one place. We need to look forward. And it is not if. It is when the next hurricane is going to hit here. Could it be a Hugo? A Matthew? Or something worse? We know that when hurricanes hit, they're fewer, but they're wider. And their, the strength of them is more intense. So we have to be prepared for that. So as we build the law enforcement center, we need it to be Cat Five, which means it can withstand a Hurricane Five category storm. We need an emergency operations center. We need a place where we can house individuals. Where do we have it? We have it in Jasper County. That's the only place we have where you can go for shelter. When you came back in Matthew, when people left and came back in Matthew and were forced to stop at the border because Jasper County wasn't as bad as Hilton Head was, so Jasper County opened and everybody thought, well, Beaufort County is open, they drove here. And then they got stopped right at the border, which was a mile from the entrance to Sun City, and a lot of Sun City residents couldn't get into Sun City because they hadn't been opened as yet. They couldn't get to Hilton Head Island, and now they have to find a place for them. So now we were scrambling for our schools to be sheltered, so on and so forth. So that's something we have to do. We're looking at a new detention center. Why? Because every single one of our counties in our region, and there are seven of them, every one of those counties in our region has the same problem we have. The detention center was built at a, a different time. It housed different inmates. They were only males. Now we have males and females. They don't have them built correctly. So now everybody has to build one. Rather than everybody building one, trying to steal the personnel from each other, we're talking about a regional detention center that we all can utilize. We do not have a juvenile detention center. If a juvenile has to be detained, they have to be transported to Columbia. We can handle that in the future. So there's going to be significant changes that way. Here's another biggie. If you came from the Northeast like I came from, we recycled. The place I lived, you would go there and you would have to say who you are by identification every single time, even though they knew you by name, you still had to show it. And then it was, what are you bringing today, Joe? Well, I have this, this, and this. Okay, bin five, bin seventeen, bin three. They must have had twenty different bins. It was, did you have logs? Did you have trees? Did you have shrubs? Did you have grass? They all went in different places. Did you have batteries? Well, batteries went there. Paint went there. Electronics went there. Washers and dryers could go here. They recycled everything. That's our future. If you're on the roads around here, especially 170, because I see it every, a day, and then once a month, the second Saturday of the month at seven o'clock in the morning, I'm there with an orange vest picking up trash on 170 for two and a half hours. We have a hundred and five such groups all over this county picking up trash. Why? We have law enforcing that said, law enforcement that says, if you have trash in the back of your pickup truck, it has to be covered. Do we see them doing that? No. Okay? All of the major carriers, Waste Management, First Republic, and any others there, their garbage trucks come down 170, they go to 462 line, that's where the landfill is. There's stuff that flies out of those trucks all the time. And so we're going to have to do something about that. And by the way, the landfill, Hickory Hill, over the course of time, Hickory Hill is built out. Now what do we do? We don't have land in Beaufort County to handle our own waste. So we have to rely on taking it elsewhere. Utilities. Utilities are a lifeblood. It's every one of those. Palmetto and Dominion Electric, you have both of those. If you have Dominion Electric, you're probably down at the end of New Riverside. That is the very last line in their grid that they have. Do we have enough power? Probably not. Because I know people who live in the Haven. Once a week, their power goes out. Half of the Haven has home generators. Okay? Because of the demand, the growth that's going on there. Beaufort-Jasper Sewer and Water, the demand that's going on there. The public service districts on Hilton Head Island, the demand that's going on there, and the fact that the wells are not deep enough because of... because of saltwater intrusion on there. So we have to deal with all of that. We're doing this great thing about broadband. Again, these are my opinions. I'm not saying that these are something that I'm forcing down on you. We're going to get to the point of, what do you think? Do you agree, disagree? Am I leaving something out? But in the area of utilities, broadband is coming. They're putting the lines in the ground. Okay, that's great. But how do you get it to the house? The last mile to the house? And the particular equipment that's used in the house? I have Spectrum. They're trying to change all of the way they do their business model. Every one of them wants to get rid of the box that's in your house and turn it into streaming. It's a more efficient way of doing it. Wireless. That's why you have the Xfinity's and the AT&amp;Ts and the Verizon, because they're doing it over telephone lines. So we have to be cognizant of that. We have to be cognizant of natural gas. We don't produce natural gas in this state. It all comes from out of state, has to be transmitted here. Do we have the piping to do that for the greater demand? Do we have enough power generated? We don't. That's been a problem for us. Okay? See? And last, but certainly not least, our environment that we enjoy. Look at the people that have been here. We have the Open Land Trust, the Rural and Critical Lands Program and Board, the Coastal Conservation League, and Green Space. We have been the leader in the state of conserving property. When you come here, people come here because they know that this is what we want to do. It's part and parcel of the growth that we have in this county. In order to have the quality of life we have, environment is an essential combination of that. It's the linchpin. We only have so much land. We only have so much water. That's it. The land is being used up. Eventually, we are going to be built out. Our surrounding counties then become where everything is going to go. We have no land for industry. Everybody around us does. That's where the industry is going to go. There are certain things we cannot change. I cannot change where 170 is, 278 is, 21, 462. Those roads, I can't change. The only thing we can do is improve them. I can't change the fact that I-95 is a two-lane road now going to go to a three-lane road. When it goes to a three-lane road starting in March of 2025, 34 months later, I-95 will be three lanes from the Georgia border to Exit 8. And then after that, they've already set up to go right to 33 Yemecy. And then after that, they'll go further. And after that, they'll eventually go all the way, and three lanes will be there. What's that going to do? That's going to bring a lot more cars. Because this is the area that people want to be in. So I've given you some things to think about. What we're going to do now is we're going to take a break. You're going to think about this because these are the pieces of the puzzle that we're going to put together. Because the budget we put together is the first step in the process of the strategic plan we're going to have to address every one of these issues or some that you may come up with that I haven't even thought about. And put it all together so that we produce a great budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Well, thanks so much. Thank you Chairman for the appetizer that you gave. The Chairman and I, while we prepared our presentations independently, I think you will find that we lined up pretty well with one another. So we passed out the, a little packet there on the second page, your packet is that QR code. It's the same QR code that you have right here. In order to, in order to move forward with our program, the first is a little test. So once you've had, you can scan that QR code into your phone, into your website, and then we have a teaser question, just a little test question to see if it works. Is that real? Oh my. I like Mr. Corrigan.
Mr. Corrigan ready? So while we're getting that done, I'd like to start this morning by thanking our staff. The last seven months for me as the interim county administrator has been very difficult. We have, Beaufort County has had inherited many, many challenges, and it is the staff that's here that helped me climb out of these problems, that we've worked together to collaborate, to come up with solutions, and real problem solving. This is a, this is a real team effort to get things done. I want to make sure that all the staff in the room, Audra's over here. Audra is really special. Audra, I'll tell you a little bit, Audra's departments are very demanding. So much that happens, and very, very infrequently do I get a phone call from Audra that says, "I need this," or "I need help with that." She handles her business all the time. So it's very important that staff handles their business. So it's very important. There's Dale in the back there, Dale Bux, he's the guy that I ask a question, and he always says yes, even if he doesn't like it. He's ready for everything. Over, over in the corner, Chuck Atkinson, our, not only our historian, so if I have, if I need some history, I need to know what's really going on here. Chuck has that knowledge. He's worked for the county for many, many years. He's experienced a lot of things, seen a lot of things, and is always a great resource for me. Who else is in the room here? Where's, there's Jared over here. Jared Fralix is our future man. He's always looking forward, always looking for what's next. It's really important to have someone on your team that keeps you looking forward. We need to look forward all the time. So Jared does that for me constantly. Denise Christmas over here is our CFO. Denise, sometimes the worrier. She finds everything in our, in our system that has a flaw. Very detail oriented. It's extremely important to have someone that's checking, checks and balances everything that we do. She's very knowledgeable with, with our policies, our procedures, our state law, and if something's not right, she's raising the flag, something for us to look at. Our legal team, Tom Kevney in the front, Brian over here, and Ms. Brittany back there. Every person on this team has tremendous value. Tom brings history with him as well, knowledge of all types of different lawsuits and cases that we have to endure, which is really important, keeps us out of trouble. Brian back here, he's the contracts master. Every word means something. Not being an attorney, when I read things, I often look at the intent of things, and I like to trust that things are right. Brian reads every word, and every word in a contract means something different. So it's very important to have someone on staff that sees things that way. It keeps Beaufort County out of trouble. And then Ms. Brittany. Brittany, Brittany Ward is another person who says yes. It doesn't matter the challenge. She has been, been very good to me, a very good sounding piece, someone that I can trust to ask an opinion of, and she will give it to me. Sometimes I don't really want to hear it, but she's going to tell me the truth. And that's very important to have folks on your staff who are not afraid to tell you, "No, this is not right."
You point that at people.
No. It's, it's for me. So again, I want to thank staff for working with me. Oh, who's, who did I miss? Oh, see, hiding way in the back. Our, Patrick. Patrick, Patrick, our IT specialist, makes things happen. His, his team with broadcasting, with our PIO in the room, where is she? There she is, back there, as well as records management, which has been critical to the operation of Beaufort County. All those, all those teams are led by Patrick and are very effective. Sorry about that, Patrick. Yeah, he blended in. Yes, all right. I, I, yes, our clerk to council's office. Very important to me as well. They are, they are often my connection between staff and council. Sarah has especially been very helpful in helping me with the history of Beaufort County, helping me find old documents, helping me make sure we're prepared for our council meetings, which is, that's quite a task some days. So it's very important that this whole team works together. And I know I'm missing someone. There are department heads out there. I have some departments that are more close to me as, as the former, and current, I guess, public safety director. I work closely with the department heads from the detention center and EMS, and it is not unusual for me to get a phone call from a department head, first thing in the morning, it just says, "Hey, yesterday sounded like it was a hard day for you. Keep it up. You're doing a good job." That's so important to hear from staff, just that little piece of encouragement. So thank you all for what you do. I hope I didn't miss anyone terrible. And there, see Eric's over here looking at me too. Eric is another guy that makes it happen. All right. Everybody awake now?
Yes.
All right. Is the test running? Okay. So you, so you've got your, your first question on your phone, and this is going to lead into, into our, in our program. All right. So we did, did we do pretty good? Everybody, everyone's clocked in? Yeah, awesome. So a little precursor for what we're, what we're going to do this morning. I'm going to, I'm going to go through a few slides here. We're going to talk about Beaufort County's vision. We're going to talk about our goals, our plan to achieve those goals, and actions that staff can take to loop us back to achieve that vision. These are not set in stone. These are a template for us to work with, if that makes sense. So our vision, the vision is how we refine our strategy for Beaufort County. Our goals will identify some actionable items and create some measurable objectives. So as the outcome of this meeting, we'll capture your conversation, we'll capture your direction, and turn that, your vision into those action items, and then distribute those to, to some of our departments where they're applicable. We'll create that plan to effectively reach those goals, and we'll talk about actions, the action of staff, how we take care of each other, how we take care of our customers, and then how we use the knowledge we gain today to generate, or to help generate our budget. We actually started the budget process in late October, early November, and the, the vision that you come up, that you create today, may have an impact on that budget. So we need to make sure we fold that into the budget so we support those items, right? Our next slide here you saw already is the vision and mission of Beaufort County. I won't read those again. The Chairman shared those with us. The next slide I have for you is, I'll call this the administrator's value statement. These are, these are actions that staff members can take. I've created this acronym here, B C CARES, Beaufort County Cares. So I came up with this because of the word care. Our, the actions we do every day are reflect, should reflect the mission of Beaufort County, to care. To care means it is a provision of what's necessary for the health, welfare, and maintenance, or protection of someone or something. That is our job, that fundamental statement, to care. So when I put that word up there, what can we get out of that? What, what things does care mean to me? That means character. It means accountability. It means respect for others. And it means empowering individuals. If our staff act in a way, Beaufort County cares, then we're going to treat each other right, we're going to treat our citizens right, and we're really going to care about all those things that we do. And we have to do that. Character is that immeasurable combination of moral and ethical values. It's principal qualities that we should all have. Things like honesty, loyalty, loyalty, reliability, diligence, perseverance. I don't, you know, some of those things that you see that, that I, that I look for in a person's character. Someone's walking down the hall and maybe sees trash on the floor, and that person stops and picks it up and removes it. That tells you about someone, not having to ask them to do that. When folks see a problem and stop, they identify a problem, this is what we should do. We identify a problem, we notify someone, because someone, that could be a reason that it's there, and then we follow up. We take ownership for that problem. Many, many times, you'll see that doesn't happen that way. If we put that value out there, and we say, "We expect folks to act with character. We expect folks to take ownership and responsibility of those things." We'll all get better because of that. Accountability, the art of taking ownership, what we just talked about, goes a little deeper than that. Exercising self-control, managing one's own ethical behavior, pretty important to me. Respect, respect is the due regard. I like that word. I'm sure that at some, at some point, Mr. McKellen would use that word in court. Due regard for someone else or something else. Respect is due regard for the feelings, wishes, rights, or traditions of others. It's a powerful word. And then empowerment. Oftentimes, we, empowerment maybe is misrepresented. Empowerment is that opportunity that we give others to go and do their work, to trust them enough to allow them to make decisions, to solve problems at the lowest level possible. If, if our staff were empowered, had the feeling that they are allowed to go and do what they know is right, within the, within the rules, right, we have some boundaries there, we have a window of things, imagine how much more powerful Beaufort County could be. So Beaufort County cares. The- The closing act is that action, the way we act for each other. We'll see if, throughout the year, if, if you like it, if you agree with that, perhaps this can become our staff motto for the year, to go along with work, live, work and play. Beaufort County cares. All right. In developing this, in developing this strategic plan, I took a dive into the past. I looked actually a little, a little bit deeper between Ms. Cheryl and Ms. Sarah. They were able to help me find some, some history of our organization and pull up our, some of our goals from the past. So I put them up there for you. I looked at other, other counties around South Carolina and other counties around the United States and tried to pull together some of the things that, that are uniform throughout the years. And you'll find that we're not much different than any other place. Beaufort County has around 200,000 residents. I looked at some counties with millions of people that have the same problems. I looked at counties with a third of the, of population that we have, they have the same problems. We're not unique. However, the solutions to our problems can be unique. Some things that you'll see here, 2016, economic development, 2018, economic development, 2021, economic development, 2023, economic development. That's a pretty powerful theme. When you look at other counties, other states, you see the same, same things, economic development. We all want to build that. Another that's, that's a trend for us is Hilton Head Island Bridge, US 278, traffic control and volume, transportation, continuing theme that's there. 2016, affordable housing, 2018, affordable housing strategies and actions. And there's another, 2016, solid waste, 2018, solid waste. Not unique. We go and look at other counties, same types of issues. All right. A few weeks ago, I sent, I sent a survey out to staff. So I shared the survey with, with council. I shared the survey with ACAs and department heads. It was about 50 or so folks that the survey was shared with. The survey started with 11 questions. Some of them were repetitive in a way that I wanted to ask the same question in a different way to try to draw out different answers. One was quite unique, and I'll talk to you about that. It took me quite a while to think about that. Some of the responses took four or five pages of, of responses for a single question. Others, all of the respondents answered the questions in less than a page, almost half a page. I'll talk about that some. So some of the first, well, one of the first questions was about the priorities of Beaufort County, services that we offer, what should we continue to offer, what, what should we stop offering? What should we do in the next five years was another question that was there. So the, the priorities there, number one was our, our public safety, our first responder services. So this is fire, police, EMS, our detention center, our dispatch, EOC, those kinds of things. So EOC is the Emergency Operations Center. So I saw those, oh, and our drug and alcohol programs, community assistant programs were on that survey among the highest priorities for us to continue offering and that we should continually offering five years from now. Included, there was another question that was kind of similar but formed, but written in a different way, and it was about ambition. If, if we wanted to do something different, what should be our ambition? It was several different answers to elevate department, or yes, evaluate department goals towards the services we provide and then see how they align with Beaufort County goals. And I think that was a, that was really important comment as well. Another, and the chairman talked about this a little bit, inspire a regional vision by working closely with all our municipalities, something that we should be doing and work towards in the next year, in the next five years. Number two is weaknesses. What are our weaknesses? Customer service experience. I looked at other counties, other states, found the same comments when, when, when I reviewed their kind of things. It's communication. We've all been around for a while, the, the number one way to improve is communicate and the number one way to fail is don't communicate. It's always there. So customer experience, I wrote down one-stop shop. Many of the, many of the comments I get from citizens talk about their, their difficulty in getting something done. They, and you receive them as well. When, when, when a resident reaches out to you, they've gone right to the top to get their problem solved, and often they get them done very quickly. When that same residence comes into this building to resolve a problem, sometimes they get different information from two people. Sometimes they get a piece of paper and they get sent away to get this filled out and they come back to the same window and now you need another piece of paper. They go away, get that filled out and come back and now they need something else again. This is really disturbing for a customer to come in, into our building with an expectation to leave with whatever it is they came to, to achieve and find that it's not a one-stop shop, that it's a three-stop shop to get things done. I think there's room for us to improve there. We can help our citizens. Recruitment and retention of staff. Back to the one-stop shop a little bit. I, I believe there are areas within the county that our policies reflect the needs of staff, that we have molded our policy to make things easier for staff when, maybe it's consolidation, maybe it's just the way paper, paperwork's done. That is not always the easiest thing for the citizen. While it makes things more efficient for us, our customers, the citizens we serve are struggling, having to repeat things and do things over. So those are some, some comments that, that I received in the survey. So in the next year, we'll be looking for ways that we can approve processes and improve the customer's experience as they come to Beaufort County. Here was the most interesting question I, I asked. How do you measure success? That was a challenging question for a lot of folks. That, that is the one question that I got only maybe a half a page of responses. One thing that's unique about local government is there's no finish line. There's no end game. It's hard to measure success when it doesn't, when it's not there. Success is different for every person. For me, I, I measure success with my family. If my, if my children are healthy, if they're doing the right thing, if they're growing their families, I've been successful. How does that, how does that, how do we measure that for local government? Some of the things that we talked about was economic growth. The, well, that you talked about was economic growth. Actions towards goals, I, I got some responses that were, were nearly definitions of the word success, which were helpful, really hard to wrap our, our minds around. High use of facilities. If something's really good, people will use it more, people will come more. Another comment that I got was the, the one person that comes into my office and says thank you. Maybe it's an email after they had service. That's pretty powerful. Maybe one out of 10 will offer a thank you. Maybe it's one out of 100. But I would think that customer experiences is better than that, but most people just come in, do their business and leave. Folks that are unhappy, we will certainly hear from them, right? Another way to measure success, lack of turnover. Do our employees stay here? Do they enjoy to work here? Is their total compensation rate their effort? Do they, do they, do we offer them a genuine work-life balance? There are some offices that I enjoy to go visit. As soon as I walk in, I'm greeted with happy people that are just excited and, and I like to think it's just that I showed up, but I don't think so. I think they're just generally happy people, so. Let's see. Yes, ma'am. Oh, I need a mic. I'm walking around too much. Sorry. I tend to. Sorry about that. I spent a lot of years in the classroom and I would use my entire classroom, so my fault. Now I'm going to be really loud. What's that? So one thing about local government, and we talked about this a few moments ago, that there is no finish line. So it's really hard to measure that success for us. There are, there are some local governments that will say, we reached this point of equilibrium, status quo. Everything is okay, we're getting the job done, there's not too many people mad, there's a few people happy, we're doing pretty good. Is that where we want to be? I'm not sure. There's this, there's this thing called dissatisfaction. Dissatisfaction is powerful when, when we're not happy, when people aren't happy. That's our opportunity to do better. That's our opportunity to change and to grow. When we really begin to accept that dissatisfaction, take the heat, learn to change, learn to improve, that's where leaders live, right? Beaufort County needs to be the leader. We need to look at ourselves, pay attention to what's going on, make sure we're looking at our customers and provide them the best quality service that we can, that we can do. All right. I'm almost done off my stump here. All right. So I wanted to talk about that for a few minutes. That was your input. That was input from staff, that was input from council, that was your thoughts and I'm glad so many people shared with me. You can, you can see some, some people were very verbose and had a lot to say and some just had a little sentence, and that's okay. And I enjoyed reading the input and, and took it to heart. So our vision for the future. Of course, this is my outline to help guide today's conversation. Connect community, manage growth and support public safety, health and education. A lot of the same things that the chairman talked about earlier that I was able to categorize into three little things, connect, manage and support. We're ready. So the strategic priorities, so strategic priorities will fall right into that vision of connect, manage and support. Some of the same things the chairman discussed, quality of life. I think that was his very first slide. Invest in the economy, public safety and health, culture and community, improve customer service. I, I think, like I said before, we created our, our slideshows independent of one another, but I think we're in sync here. So quality of life, some things that we can focus on for the residents of Beaufort County. Housing, recreation, transportation and our natural resources. Again, all the things that, that the chairman spoke about. Investing in our economy. What are things that are important to residents of Beaufort County? Our medical services, our military, our education, our workforce and, and overall economic development. Those places for folks to live, work and play. There's a, there's a connection here. That, that quality of life, that is connection. This investment, this is manage. The next slide, public safety, public health and safety, this is support. This is investing in our relationships. Yes, investing in our relationships, our recreation programs, our health, our health programs and our community services. That is connect and support. There's two of our visions. Now we have culture and community, preservation, passive parks, tourism, libraries, all of these things that make Beaufort County special, that make people want to get out of their homes. And lastly, is improve customer service. This is very much an administrative, internal portion. All three of those visions are here. Connect, manage and support. Improve internal and external customer service. I'm going to go through the next five slides are, are each of those areas. We're going to talk about, just briefly, what I have on, on each one of these slides are actions that we're already doing. County staff is working in all of these areas. Once we get to the, after this slide, your, your QR code's going to come into action. It's, it's going to ask you, which one of these things in quality of life is most important to you? What can we do most to improve? Your, your vote here will be tabulated. I'm going to get to the end of the slideshow and then we're going to put a big poster of that back up and we're going to talk specifically about the, the one item or the two items that you rated the highest. All right. So quality of life, housing. Our, our intent is to strengthen relationships with partners, create, we can create an internal specialist program, so someone that, a staff member who is focused on workforce and affordable housing care. We can continue to work on programs with our outside agencies in support of that same. Recreation, continue to support current programs and expand programs to community centers, expand sports facilities. In transportation, support additional opportunities to meet the county needs. And transportation is expensive. This is about money. It is about dollars, it is about the permits and working with state and federal agencies to secure that. It's very difficult process. And lastly here is natural resources. Preserve and protect both our lands and waterways. How do we manage, how do we want to take care of those things? So I think the next slide should be our, our question. So you should have a, a question shows up on your phone that asks you, which one of those is your highest priority, which is your number two priority? Hopefully we get a, an outlier here.
Can everybody pick two? Do you have two?
Mine's high.
You have to push one to the left.
Yeah.
So I can only do one?
Two.
It should, it should be two.
It has your first one, then you pick your second one and then you put a sentence.
Some of these, some of these, so whatever your first one is, click it and drag it up. Drag it up. Yeah. My phone did the same thing.
Double hit it, it'll go off.
Oh, you tap it twice?
Yeah.
There you go. That was the first one, the next one will be easier. All right. Everyone in? Transit, housing and transportation. So in a few minutes, we'll come back to that, we'll come back to those two items and we'll talk specifically about housing and transportation. And that's that opportunity that I need to hear from you. I need to hear what your expectations are. How can we improve what we're doing in these two categories? Next is invest in the economy. We're talking about the same things the chairman talked about a few moments ago here. Medical services. Continue to support our partners' efforts and initiatives to advance medical services in Beaufort County. Next is military. Next is military. Further development of relationships. Collaborate and support our military priorities. Develop new opportunities, working with the Military Enhancement Committee, or MECC, as well as directly with our COs and XOs from our military bases. Workforce and education. The chairman had a big list of all of our partners there. We can explore creative opportunities to work with local education institutions. Support initiatives that promote education and priority sectors. And lastly, economic development. Foster relationships, focus on diversity, diversifying the county's tax base, recruit employers, and industry to increase the workforce. There's another question on your phone.
I'd just like to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Education, workforce, and medical services, to me, are almost the same because the schools have started these medical, even at elementary level, to encourage children to major in medical.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we have a phlebotomist when we go to the doctor that knows how to do it.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's hard to choose between those two.
It is. They're all quite connected together. That's why we did them on the same screen.
Well, they're very connected.
Yes.
And if we only vote for twos, that means we haven't talked about the others?
Not necessarily. We only have, well, we have a few hours for the afternoon, so we'll focus on ones and twos, and if there's more time, we'll talk about whatever's on the table. Nothing's off the table today. As soon as I'm done, then it's your turn to talk and for us to listen. How are our votes? We're done? Okay, awesome. Next is public safety. And again, we're back to health. And partners and agencies. Health support programs related to preventable health issues, mental health challenges, substances and substance abuse and addictions. We, again, Alda's over here and she manages some great departments that work hard for Beaufort County, but I can tell you, they struggle. They don't have enough counselors. They don't have enough space for counselors. They are overwhelmed with the number of, what's the correct word? Visitors? They're overwhelmed with a number of people who need assistance. It's important that we continue these really good programs and make improvements for them on their behalf. Partners with agencies. We have begun developing really good relationships with our sheriff's office, our fire services, our EMS. There's a few more agencies out there that we might forget about. Beaufort County has a northern and a southern hazardous material team. We don't need them often, but when we need them, they're very critical. The equipment that they use is extremely expensive and it's very dangerous. Right now, the only dollars that they get are through an LEPC program, so there's opportunities from them. The water search and rescue teams. Water search and rescue teams are all over Beaufort County and they are all voluntary. They raise money by doing golf tournaments and different things to pay for fuel and vessels. Beaufort County does support some of those teams with facilities and places to work. There's a beautiful one in Port Royal that's supported by municipalities as well, but there's more opportunity for us to partner with some of these agencies that do great work inside of Beaufort County. There's another question for you. We're almost to the end. All in? Great. Our next strategic actions here, culture and community. Remember I told you that culture and community covers two of our vision statements, which were connect and support. Opportunity for us to do a few things. Preservation. Continue to support protection of natural resources, expand conservation efforts, and provide some dedicated staff. Passive parks. Provide funding for development of parks on current properties. The chairman mentioned this a few minutes ago. I was surprised that he did because we didn't discuss this, honestly. We have lots and lots of property that we've purchased to protect. We need to fund the, we need to fund the passive parks in a way that they are protected from stormwater issues, from development issues, that we're, we have lots of land. Now we need to take care of it in the right way. It's very expensive and time-consuming, laborious job to manage these passive parks. Next on our list is libraries. Focus on the current expansion of plans and programs and facilities. Our residents love our libraries. They are great resources for students, for retirees alike. There's so many good programs in our libraries. We're doing a good job, but we want to make sure we're paying attention to what's going on there. Culture and community. The last is tourism. Fund efforts to encourage tourism. Ensure the safety of visitors. Protect our history, culture, and our environment. You have a question for the last slide. That's the last phone survey, so. Ian? Good. Alright. The last action item, again, this is improve customer service, and this is a staff and administration-focused topic. External customer service. Promote transparency and accessibility. Improve communication with citizens via media and technology. Ensure citizens are provided opportunities to be heard and engaged in county projects. Streamline county services. Staff looks at these all the time. Are there things that we are duplicating effort amongst departments? Do we have departments competing with one another? Where can we become more efficient and effective internally? So we're always looking for those kinds of things. Internal customer service. Plan for the future. Develop succession planning and leadership programs. It is frightening to see some of our departments led by professionals who have been here for a long time and who's next. How do we continue these good programs if we're not really focused on succession planning and leadership training for who's next? It's really important for the future of Beaufort County that administration keeps their eye on what's next. Retention of staff through education, promotion, and total compensation. Identify and reduce duplication of effort in our workforce. No survey to answer for that one. So, in summary, the vision I presented to you, of course, is quite flexible. This is really an outline to drive today's conversation, or the rest of the afternoon's conversation. We're right where I wanted to be, so we have about three hours to discuss these kind of topics because we'll get some lunch in between there somewhere. Again, to review, we talked about those three fundamental things that Beaufort County can do: connect, manage, and support. The objectives there are focusing on that vision. Listening to you. Hearing our goals. Creating that plan and connecting that to action. That action of employees who carry, maybe it says Beaufort County cares, B.C. cares on their shoulder, and act in a way that supports the mission of Beaufort County. And finally is the plan. Quality of life. Invest in our economy. Provide for the health and safety of our employees, our families, our neighborhoods, our communities. Improve culture and community. And the administrative one. Improve our customer service. Find a way to be better. So, this plan lets us now focus on your vision. We'll take another quick break. Ten minutes, fifteen minutes, whatever's appropriate, and then we're gonna come back. And what I have for you are those slides that we just talked about. We have a big board for you. It's also in your packet. We're gonna take your scores from your electronic input. We're gonna choose the number one and two, and it's your time for, to speak and for us to listen. What do you think we should focus on in the priority that you chose? And then we can continue to explore some other things. So we'll take a break. We'll come back and then we'll start, we'll get to work and listen to your vision for Beaufort County's future. Thanks so much. Presentations, hopefully you're inspired now. Like I said in the earlier presentation, now is the opportunity for us to go back and look at these priorities that you voted on and discuss the highest priorities, the number twos, and we can talk about the number threes and fours in there as well. We've got five of these to get through, so if we spend a half hour or 40 minutes on each one, then we'll finish on time about 2:30, 3 o'clock. We can be longer, or we can be shorter. It's really up to you and your conversation. So when we talked about quality of life, we had housing as number one, transportation as number two, recreation and natural resources. So the chairman talked about some of our housing opportunities. I talked about some of the things that staff is working on. Remember that if our discussion focuses on one thing, if it just focuses on housing, staff is still working on everything else that's here. There's just an opportunity for us to listen to what you would like to see, make that connection between your vision for housing, turn that into a measurable objective, and define whether or not we need to make room in our budget to support that vision and that action that you come up with. So, the floor is yours. Let's talk about housing.
Well, I'll start.
Yes, ma'am.
We have the Beaufort County Housing Trust Fund. We have part of money last year. Keep that going. I have no idea, but progress may, the interim director's, but no idea. Types of housing, categories of housing, subcategories. Do they have higher requirements? To be determined.
Yes, ma'am. I'll write that on there as well. Beaufort Memorial Hospital. We've been working with them as a partner as well. Yes, sir.
Backing onto what Allison, I think, I'd like to see if we could develop a kind of a plan to draw people in to participate in providing these services. And I'm not saying we should cast a net out and lure people in here and have them ask us how much, but I think there must be a way to communicate the availability of it. Since we have the permission now from the federal government to use some of the infrastructure lines of order for housing, maybe we could generate some interest in having people who have programs already or are considering having programs to show some interest in contacting us. I'm not sure how to do it, but there must be a way where we get the word out that we're in this business and we'd like to see more of this being developed here.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I want to just piggyback, just as a thought. We have, and we had at one point in time, Beaufort Jasper Economic Development.
Yes, sir.
You know, and a lot of times there are housing that's out there that just need a little bit of repair. You know, if we could provide them some funding source that they can go out and repair some homes, I think that's, I'm just going to my mind. No, I want you to say, because there are state programs that we will be eligible for that a lot of people don't know about, so we're going to do is find houses that need to be upgraded, you know, roofs, windows, siding. Doesn't matter which roof. Here's the key, the only way a developer can do that is to have more houses on a track of land. We can't have a whole, our zoning imperials says X. They're always coming and saying, I need you to change the zoning here, because the only way I can make this work, apartments for low-cost housing, you know, where you can, it's your first home, so you can't afford a half million dollar home, but you could afford a $200,000 home. The only way I can make that work is I need four homes to accommodate, not one home to accommodate. So that's a discussion we're going to have to have and come to.
Works with because we already know how many houses were short. That's not going away. It's how do we balance this?
I'm going to piggyback on what Mr. Glover said. When we go to Alcoa, they do, they help seniors, I don't go to senior housing, not because I'm older, but just because, Alcoa helps seniors with a roof, or, you know, the roof sinking, they can't afford to fix it, so that goes into what you're saying, we could help rehab some of these homes. As you said, Mr. Passman, we've got more people retiring here, and they're living their life, and maybe outliving their social security or whatever, so they're going to get to a point where they can't replace the roof, can't replace the furnace, and, you know, Alcoa does, but they do just a few, remember they tell us like 12 a year or something? And that might be something we're going to have to look at, because those homes are eventually going to be open and need to be rehabbed for police fire, whatever. So I'm in that vein with you.
Maybe we can look at that letter from the Secretary of Treasury and look at the language and see if they deal with anything other than affordable. Maybe they have something for seniors that would free up some of that ARPA money that we could use, as you pointed out, for just bringing things up to code or bringing things up to a certain standard. And I don't remember what the language was, or even do the upholding of it, but I think it came from the Treasury part.
It's the Treasury.
But there is a letter that says we can carve out some of that infrastructure money. And I'm not saying use all of it, but that might be a source of some funding without going into the general fund here.
Yes, ma'am.
Is John, go ahead, because you have his book.
That's all right.
As we know, land is very expensive. We have agencies that want to, maybe, we may have land that we don't need, that may be suitable for some agencies like Habitat for Humanity. I don't, we did, years ago, they did an inventory of land, but I don't know that it's been done recently that the county owns. When, I think John Weaver was here, they did that, so.
That's right. We have like 462 parcels of land, some of which had houses on them. We don't know how many more we have. We've sold off a couple of them, but yes, we should have some sort of inventory of that, because as you said, we have a lot of property. When you own property, you have to maintain that property, because if you allow the stormwater to affect somebody else, we have a problem. So we really need to take a look at where the land is. Is there an alternative source of usage for a particular piece of property that may help with our housing?
Sir? Yes, sir.
John, I appreciate the presentations that the chairman gave, as well as yourself. And you said something that I think really makes a lot of sense, and what is your vision? Is what we're going to talk about here today. I want to talk to you about the people that can represent their vision as to what they expect of us. First thing is good students of the money, right? You know, less taxation, number one. You know, let's not tax our residents out of where they live. Two, I believe through ARPA, I'll piggyback on my colleagues' comments on using some ARPA funds, I approve that with the understanding that there's going to be some MOA, MOUs in the place that, again, allow us to ensure, whatever we do, and there should be many options that we look at, that we're very good students of how this money is used. So again, all for all these opportunities and options, but again, make sure we don't tax any people out of where they live. That's priority one. And two, no matter what we do, let's keep our vision as part of ours. That's huge.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to put dollars on there, and that's for funding. Where are we going to find these dollars? Thank you. And those MOUs, MOAs that we are generating now based on these various options are critical before anything is done with the money.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
You mentioned Low Cog, is that the place up in Yumicee that you go to? Okay. Because I went to one meeting in the very beginning, and Carlton Dallas and I sat down and talked about this over lunch one day. I think they do an excellent job in managing their money up there, and they really do. And Carlton and I felt that if we could get the private sector, the wealthy individuals that live in Beaufort County, that have foundations, let them donate some of the money to Low Cog so they can go out with private funds, go out and help these seniors that need a new roof, or like you said, or need a new heat pump, or whatever. Because Carlton and I, we both agreed, I mean, I think Low Cog does an incredible job, and I've only been to one meeting. Now, the new mayor of Beaufort was said, while he was running for office, said that he felt we need help from the private sector as well. So I think that's something we haven't looked at. Back when I worked in investment banking, international banking, whatever, all these wealthy people have foundations, and they donate that money to local charities. And it helps the county, it helps the state, it helps, you know, the area.
And the community foundation's giving money for the housing trust fund. I don't recall the amount, but, and I think there's others that would do that.
Yeah, I think we need to start pulling.
I want to piggyback on what Mr. Passman said as well. There are developers that want to create workforce housing as part of a community that's connected, we talked about. However, it's going to increase density, you're going to have to change the zoning, which is, you know, like a dirty word to, you know, in the council, but if you want to have it, you can't put one house on an acre, like he's saying. And they want to develop workforce housing with other things, but it's going to increase the density in Bluffton, let's say, or other places. So we're calling a conundrum here, we don't want to increase density and traffic and everything else, but we do want the developers to invest, not our money, the developers pay for it. So it's something we're going to have to struggle with over and over and over.
Again, that's private money.
Yes, ma'am, you're exactly right. When you begin to look at the items on this page, it's very important that we recognize that one affects the other. Housing affects transportation, increases the need for recreation, increases or decreases natural resources in those areas. So it's very important that we recognize the density is so important. If we increase density, we reduce the.
Natural.
Yes, the burden on our natural resources, but we increase the burden on transportation, and we increase the need for recreation. So they're very symbiotic to one another.
It's all interconnected.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I want to just make this statement here, because this is where I am. Whatever we decide to do here, and I'm glad the chairman used 30 years window back future, whatever we decide here will impact 30 years from now. So we need to be very careful. I think we do need to grow. The question becomes, how do we grow, and how do we plan that growth? And if you use as an example, 30 years ago, there was a forest 30 years ago, and today it's called Sun City.
Yep. It was a paper fair.
It was a what?
It was trees for paper.
And so.
It was a swamp.
And some of my best creatures were out there, with the wild boars and everything else and stuff. So we need to be very careful when we talk about planning, so that we zone where it's most impactful, and leave the other areas so that the deer and antelope can roam and stuff.
Be careful, that's all. And what I said when we were talking about natural resources, it's land, it's water. We only have so much land and so much water. You take a look at where we were 30 years ago now, and where we may be 30 years in the future. 30 years in the future, we may well be building out Beaufort County. There may be no other land that we can put anything on. And then what you do is you start over again. You know, this neighborhood is torn down and rebuilt, something like that. They do that in various areas. I will say to you that transportation is as important as housing, because it's live housing, work, transportation, play, recreation, okay? You can't live if you can't get to work. If your house where you are now is an hour and a half away from where you work, you're having a difficult time. And we have that. We found that out during the pandemic. Those individuals that were coming from Hampton County, and their job was on Hilton Head, and they were in the service industry, they were spending a great deal of time trying to get there, or didn't even have a job any longer. That became a problem. We have to take a look at what is the trend? When you take a look at the history of our country, we started off in the inner city. We were urbanized. After World War II, we went out into the suburbs. Now, we see there's a mix. There are people that are coming back to the cities. You take a look at some of the cities, you know, the Buffalo New Yorks, and the Cleavlands, and the Detroit's, and how they're reinventing themselves. Well, we're not going to be a Buffalo, or Cleveland, or a Detroit, because we're not that big, but what we have to do is to take a look at, where do people want to live? A lot of people like the concept of the village concept, where they literally live, work, and play in there. If there are young families there, they love to have, that they can walk to their school. There's a grocery store right there, there's a park right there. If they want to go to the theater or something like that, that's when they leave their neighborhood. Otherwise, they're very happy in there. If you have your senior citizen complexes, like a Sun City, you have the things that are for them, around them, so that they don't have to leave their environment. I think that's the focus we have to have, is how do we put this puzzle together?
Well, the other focus is back to the regional approach, because on Sun City, they are now, we are now squished between Bluffton and Harderville that's exploding. So Harderville, the number of homes is astronomical to me, which is impacting the triangle that Jared talks about all the time. But Bluffton's building out Riverside, so we're, you know, our main campus is built up, but our transportation, because others around us, that's why it's got to be the other municipalities in the region, Harderville, Jasper, they're all impacting us every which way.
You know, go on, noise and focus at the beginning of these things, particularly when someone comes in for upzoning, and they promise to deliver to us affordable housing in their development, that they can get 40 more units on the property, and we upzone it. And I don't know if anybody ever follows up to see if they actually did it.
Yes.
I don't know if there's accountability for that, you know? I don't know if we lose track of it.
Well, they lose to a developed agreement. Once it's in writing, then they have to comply. And that's the key part.
Checks on it.
The planning department.
They do, yes.
Planning department does?
Yeah, all those are put through the planning department, and they're recorded.
So then they follow up to make sure they did what they said they were going to do. Somebody does that.
Yes.
Just real quick, I know we've tossed around affordable housing, workforce housing. Do we as a body actually have working definitions of those? Because I think the funding sources at the state and federal level, and I'm looking at you, Tom, I think the funding sources state certain things they work for, certain things they affordable, are they overlapped, or do we have good definitions of those?
There's a federal definition of affordable housing, it's very, very in ston.
And that's an AMI.
So South Carolina, as the Mesher Act talks about affordable housing, when we established the Regional Housing Trust Fund, that defines affordable housing as housing that is valued, as referenced by HUD, for people who may think it's.
Thirty to eighty.
Thirty to eighty percent with an emphasis, I think, was it thirty percent? Over thirty percent. And that's what we have, what we have right now is a regional housing trust fund. So we haven't really dove deep into the workforce housing. The first thing that we've done is the allocation of $600,000 to Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust for the benefit of CCDC. And so we're working on that right now, but that's just with regard to CCDC. In addition to that, we're bringing forward a payment, A-TAX, H-TAX, to talk about, the state locals have talked about in the portal.
So the other thing I would say, I voted recreation, I did transportation, recreation, because I know we're working on housing. If we want young families to stay in the area, which we do, we don't want all my age people, you want working people, you want kids in schools, then recreation's a big thing. There's nowhere for them to go to some of these places. They don't have ball fields, they don't have playground, well, we have a beautiful new playground. We don't have a splash pad, I'm going to throw that out on the table.
I've got it in here for you.
I know, I saw that. But that's what young families want. You know, ask David, he's got young children, that's what they're looking for to live, you know?
You hold on, here, 30 years ago, we didn't have pickleball.
I know.
How prominent pickleball is. So those are the kinds of things futuristic we have to take a look at.
Yeah, Mr. Dawson couldn't make it today, but he asked me to speak up on this matter with regard to recreation. He says, no one's playing basketball or baseball very much anymore in the youth. He said, they just need water, sports, you know, and recreation facilities, like you said, splash pad. He says technology, games for them to be interested in, because if they have nothing to do, they drift into a place where it may not be healthy. So if we could, in the recreational planning for youth, and I hate to suggest something that's going to make people look at a screen, but in the absence of that, if there's no more interest in the traditional sports, which he seems to think there isn't, then water sports and recreational activities involving a screen, perhaps with limited time on it, maybe there'll be a timer on it and it shuts off, but that would seem to give them, that's what people are interested in, young people are interested in these days. And I don't know if anybody's moving in the direction of providing it. You wanted me to mention that, that's all.
That's very good comment. I think staff, we've talked about all these different recreation opportunities, and that is probably the first time that I've heard the need to look at technology. Because you're absolutely right. My day, we played outside.
I know.
We went to the basketball court and the baseball court, and we played kickball, and we rode bikes, and made little ramps out of dirt and all kinds of stuff. Kids don't do that today.
That's my very own.
Yeah. When the chairman mentioned the two-lane roads and the traffic circle, I remember that.
But you know, if you've got data from the recreation centers, you'd see the softball teams are all full, the basketball, and so we still need to offer though, but this is the future.
Absolutely.
And maybe in some areas, they don't want basketball or softball. I know down at Bluffton Recreation Center, they can't have enough softball teams, they don't get enough. You know, they have so many kids. But we could offer other things, and I'm all for a water park. Slide, splash pad, whatever you name it.
Right, that's right. It's different than, splash pad is different than a water park.
A water park.
We need both.
Splash pad's cheaper, but, okay.
Our communities have become more diverse and have more needs than they ever did before.
It's important for us to to recognize that and try to find ways to to achieve that, give all those folks an opportunity.
As Mr. Bartholomew says, you can charge. If you have a really good water park, he goes to St. James Island, did you say?
James Island.
One of those. You can charge, so now it's a tourism draw. Now you can play with ATAX money, so just bring it all together.
Rec Center, Hilton Head charges people to use the facility. And they also have, it's a private function. They get money from the town, they get money from us. It's important we continue to contribute to them. They have private fundraisers and they have people who make independent donations. And their budget is probably three or four million dollars a year and they get that from a variety of sources and it's greatly used. And I saw in your early handout, you were talking about establishing an auditorium here in Beaufort County somewhere of a good size that people could go to and could be affiliated with a water park and that could be the centerpiece for it. I think that's really very exciting and would be a great thing to do because there are a great many people that use the Hilton Head Island Rec Center, don't live on Hilton Head, come in from other parts of the county and they pay their fee and they use the pool and they use the gym and the track and all the other things that are available to them. No one gets turned away, but everybody has to become a member and make a contribution to get in there. And I don't think there's anything wrong with it. We do that in our in our community. And I think an auditorium would be a great way to, it'd be a great project for us to have in the water. I think that'd be really great.
Excellent. We have a we have a partner right now who's working towards that that we've been talking with, so we can we can talk about that some more. So we have talked about this slide for about forty minutes. Anyone else?
One last thing with the transportation for Palmetto Breeze. I would love to see if we could tap into more funding for that, expand it and potentially get a senior citizen pass or something for folks on a fixed income that's cheaper than what we're currently offering.
And I've heard the same thing from my constituents and even the mayor of Port Royal, not Port Royal, mayor of Beaufort, Phil Comer has been pushing for that, some type of senior pass for, if we can. And I know in south of the Broad, they have a tri almost like a trolley system that runs a route. I hope with more funding, maybe that could that's could be envisioned from Ladies Island, City of Beaufort, Port Royal, there already is a route, but something maybe increase that routing because there's a lot of people have no means of transportation or limited transportation.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't with the new census data, didn't we move into an urbanized area that opened up more federal funding for us?
Just on Palmetto Breeze. So Palmetto Breeze, the one thing that's holding Palmetto, there's two things that are holding Palmetto Breeze back. One is density, so having enough people to use the service. People don't want to give up their cars to get on the bus. And second is funding. So what historically has happened, they have to go to all the municipalities and counties that they service and get on their budget each and every year and ask for funding. What they don't have is a reoccurring funding source. All they can ask for is one year at a time. With a reoccurring funding source of some value, that's really what will give them the ammunition to plan and prepare and make these bigger programs than what they currently have.
You know, about twenty or thirty years ago, there was a suggestion of Palmetto Breeze being charged with ferry system here in the county. They couldn't get funding for it to have them do that. But if there was a an authority that was created to provide surface and water transport, Palmetto Breeze would seem to me to be the logical one to do it, particularly if if they were able to get those federal and state grants to fund them out with a real good plan, with real good funding. And then we would have a local authority here who could take responsibility for running a ferry system that would stop in a lot of locations, not just Bluffton to Defuski, but Savannah, Bluffton, Hilton Head, Defuski, all, make it a real ferry service. And maybe maybe we should just start talking about Palmetto Breeze, see if they might have an interest in that, what their idea is. Do you have anything to add, Jared?
Yeah, I've got some intel on that. So they they're interested in whatever that we're interested in. They are already an authority, so that doesn't need to be created. They are that. And the the good thing about Palmetto Breeze is their their funding, federal funding comes from a different place from DOT's funding. Theirs comes through federal transit authority versus federal highway authority. So they're in that game, all in their buses and capital expenses, those are grants that they get through federal transit authority already. So to get them, whether they're in the ferry business or not, having them as a stakeholder and a partner to help us because our transportation needs are not coming out of that same bucket. So we don't live in that same world as Palmetto Breeze does already, so.
Yeah, and we align in the ferry business. So wouldn't it be great to have an authority that could run a ferry system, a water and land, a surface transportation system and get us out of it?
I met with the three's last week at a board meeting and I'm telling you, they are looking for our direction. Hank, you and I talked about that a little bit, so I hope we can get more funding for them because they are looking to to us.
I'm meeting with them next week, actually. I'm rehearsing at the seams right now. I'm meeting with them next week.
Excellent.
And so they've applied for ATAX funds. So I want to sit with them next week and we're going to go through their budget and find out if they can, I'm going to ask if they can identify how much of their budget is related to tourism. And so if they can identify a dollar amount, then they can use that ATAX.
They have the ability to show you that.
Somebody sent us something last week about two hundred and twenty million dollars in grants for rural ferry service that was made by the federal government to to advance rural ferry service in areas that really need it. We weren't on the list for that distribution. We didn't get any money there, but apparently there's money there. And you know, I don't know, we can't really give them a lot of money, but I know that the pockets in the federal government is open. Maybe we have to start thinking about that. I have it in my phone.
We are learning to send him a minister next month.
I was on my list, hire a grant writer.
So I'll strike that off, that's awesome. One one final comment about transportation. We have to take a look at what society is doing. In COVID, the fast food restaurants and other restaurants couldn't serve people indoors. So they changed their business model. You could go up to the window, the drive through of the Wendy's, the McDonald's, the Zaxby's, and they found out, wow, that's a pretty good model. And now they're changing it so that they're only drive through. They really don't want you in their business. The restaurants were able to survive because of DoorDash and Uber Eats. So that's putting a great deal of pressure on traffic moving along our roadways. We just have to be cognizant of that. That is not going away.
And I have I have two more things for recreation. We don't really have to dive into it, but I want to make sure that the parks and rec study that we got back and the boat ramp study that we got back does not just sit on the shelf. I want to make sure that we expand those regional facilities for the parks and rec. Ladies Island needs some love over there. I mean, those parks and rec areas, they're they're tough. And same thing with St. Helens, get those regional facilities out there and really make it make it awesome. Same thing with the boat ramps. I'd love to see us use our funds or whatever necessary to get those things up and running. I mean, we're a water-based community. We should have the best boat launches in the in the state.
Right.
So those are my two cents on that.
Wow, you you've hit the nail on the head, David. We have a lot of plans on a lot of shelves. The problem we have is we don't know what's in the plan right now. It was made three or four years ago. It's nice, but we don't have the Cliff Notes that says, okay, this two hundred page document is summarized right here. And so what we're creating now is the strategic plan for the future. This is year one of our thirty year plan.
Well, the Parks and Recreation Plan's not that old, but.
It's one year.
Yeah, June. I think Chuck told me it was June when we it was presented to us, so it's it's still good, so we just need a hundred million dollars.
That's right. Our planning department is working with municipalities right now and updating the Ladies Island plan, transportation plans. And we do have the new boat ramp study that's out. And there's some work going on right now. We're making forward progress, all joy boat landings on our construction right now. It's a good time of year for that. That's a, you know, that's a well-used landing. Folks will be upset if we did that in the middle of summer. So I think we have a lot of good information here already. There's a lot of things that we can work on to find funding sources within our budget. We will, staff will take these and turn these into action items, into objectives for us and attach a dollar amount to those. After today's meeting, probably later this week or next week, we'll send all these action items back to council in a in a perfected format once we refine those. And we'll talk about in that message, opportunities for us to to fund some of these things. If we're ready to, we have, it's eleven fifty. Do y'all want lunch now or you want to move on to the next slide? Move on. Okay, we'll put the next one up here as soon as we watch here. Okay.
I want everybody to remember all this when we talk about changing the ATAX ordinance. Just remember ATAX, it's money that we could use to fund some of these things. Just throw it on the table.
Especially boat ramps.
It's a good idea.
It's like a goo spaghetti sauce.
I see that water park in front of me.
They're trying.
We're going to change the order a little bit.
Oh, public health.
We're going to move to the public health and safety. This might be a little faster so we're not here for forty five minutes or so and we won't let your lunch get cold. Public health and safety. We have health and we have opportunities for partners and other agencies.
They go hand in hand.
Absolutely.
You can't have one without the other. The partners are the providers or the agencies are the providers. The health is the programs they have, how they affect the certain groups. We have our youngest children that we have to deal with, newborns and those kinds of things that affect them, our youth as they grow, our teenagers, our middle portion of our population and our senior population. Each and every one of them has health issues that we have to deal with.
So in in this section, I'm going to write down seniors and and perhaps that should be, right now our senior programs are managed by Parks and Recreation, but this is a this is a good place to capture that. When we're talking about in the in the health section, these are things, of course, our partners, we we can't, we don't do surgery in Beaufort County, somebody else does that for us. But here in health, these are the services that Beaufort County provides through our drug and alcohol programs and our other community research, our outreach programs, things that we, Beaufort County, do directly for our community. What can we do better? What can we do differently?
Rebecca from Drug and Alcohol Brief, the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board last week, and she did an excellent job. But one thing I learned, the the peer-to-peer program that's been instituted, I think if we can increase that, that really reduces the number of, she gave a number of seventy percent, is that right, Audra? So if if you get out of the detention center and you have a drug or alcohol program, if you're paired up with a counselor who has been through the same thing, you have a seventy percent chance of not going back to the detention center, which is otherwise, you're probably going to end up back at the detention center. And I'm looking to Larry because these sound like good numbers to me. So any increase, we can keep more people out of our detention center by helping our peer-to-peer program. There are people that would do a great job. And you are a public defender, you probably know more than I do about that.
No, and I was going to say, I think Larry, you're familiar with this. I know our court system right now, the magistrate level, I believe, is trying to get a second chance court, I think the name's still in progress, but tackling the issue from a from a different angle. So rather than just throwing the book at people that are in the cycle, trying to get them out of the cycle. So if we can have any support to get behind that program, I'd love to see that happen. And that's what our our magistrate court's doing that right now. I think there's a jurisdictional issue they're trying to work out.
Any funding for that, Dave?
I think there's got to be some funding. I don't know where it's coming from, if they have it already. I don't know if that's from the state level or where that needs to come from.
Well, it may show up in their request in July.
Yeah, well, I'll keep an eye out for it. And then the other thing, I haven't worked directly with a lot of these people that are affected, especially the ones that were living on the waterfront for a while. I think a homeless shelter is necessary, but one of the things that several clients told me was they need a day center. And I think that's achievable. And I asked her what a day center was and she had told me that a place to put their belongings during the day, a place to get mail, a place to have internet access, a shower, it doesn't, a place where they can actually get up and running and then get out there and try to get a job and get out of the cycle. So that was one of the the holdbacks was having to not being able to receive mail.
Interesting.
I don't know if there already is something, but she she didn't seem to be aware of it. So.
Greater use of the opioid settlement money.
Yeah.
That's that's another biggie.
That's in the bank or somewhere?
I don't know. The greater use of the opioid settlement money?
It's possible. I don't know. That's something we can look at for sure.
Is that in the bank or somewhere, that money?
Opioid settlement money?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have it though.
We have it.
Well, it's a state. The state has already applied for it, but as one of the litigating counties, most of our requests are approved automatically. We've got, I don't know.
So you have to have programs and show you using it for, then you get it back to them. We can certainly do some research on that. We we have a great individual on contract on staff who was an expert at finding dollars and using dollars.
And you you brought something up earlier with our water rescue. I did not realize that they, I knew they were volunteer based, but I didn't realize we weren't funding.
Yes, sir. We provide space for them. I think they even pay their own electric bill between the Beaufort County and Port Royal, the one, the local. And there was, there's one in Bluffton, there's one in Fort Island. Each of the local communities kind of supports that organization. And they really do supplement the other first responder agencies, the sheriff's office, they they have, well, I don't know if they still do, they had a dive crew and they have a boat and some things like that. But the water rescue teams are positioned all throughout the county and they're all volunteer organizations.
Is there anything we can do to make their life easier so they don't have to go to fundraisers?
Very likely. So I'll I'll write that down.
And and last thing, I'm not going to quit talking, I promise, but last thing, I don't know if this is the appropriate spot to bring this up, but is there a way that we can bring back in or look into retirement benefits for for employees? Not not just for first responders, but for county employees?
Health benefits for retirement, health benefits? So.
I know that's probably a good question, but.
No, it's a good question. And and has been on my mind, we met with our healthcare provider, our agents that provide, that manage our healthcare system and asked them for for opportunities. What can we do for, it's really kind of gap insurance, that health insurance from when someone retires to when they can collect social security. So there's some unique opportunities out there, similar to a healthcare savings account where individuals can invest in their own health insurance over time. And if, you know, it's another benefit of working for Beaufort County is that you could collect these funds over a number of years, ten, fifteen, twenty years. And the the more money that you save on your own behalf, the sooner you could retire and continue to have healthcare. So we're looking at some programs like that.
Do we match that if they make a saving?
There's potential for that. There are some programs that that, you know, it's really up to you.
And they use that money to pay a premium?
They could. They could use that to to pay a premium. They could use that to, there are some, it it becomes very complicated when you when you talk to the insurance folks, there are some ways that they could stay on it as a county, it's not necessary as employee, but on the county role. So they could continue to be on that, but they wouldn't be collecting health insurance dollars from the county. They're, they pay for that. And there are, there are external programs that are there as well. So we are looking at those options?
Sure. How does other agencies handle that for their employees when they retire? And I'm using like state or whoever, how do they handle that? And should we not be pretty close to how they're doing it? Because we should offer that benefit to our employees. I think that's critical for me. me.
It is a moving target, so it depends on where you are. Some state agencies outside of South Carolina, Georgia, for instance, they become vested, and it depends on where they work and what they do. Some of those employees, when retired, they have perpetual health benefits, others do not. When we talk about...
We had that program in the past.
We did.
Right, and we dropped it. It is just, to me, it's just a matter of trying to pick that back up and move it forward. I know it costs, and we need to look to see the cost involved in that and move it forward.
So I have to go back and look at where we were, and there was some litigation involved in that, so we would have to be incredibly careful moving forward. It's very important that we acknowledge the cost. Beaufort County, the exponential cost of providing that healthcare over time, as more retirees come in, that gets more and more expensive every year that happens, so we would, the county, or you as council, would have to really acknowledge how we're going to fund a program like that over time. The options that we looked at with our provider, would, that burden would be assumed by the individual, and this would not...
Definitely, on the county side, I understand what you're saying. My thing is that we used to, we dropped it, and we're losing employees, valuable employees, who would look at their health insurance as an issue, that would go to someplace else to work, to finish their years, so that they can have that insurance. That's important, and I think we need to look at and see, if they're doing it, we should be able to do it as well.
It's very, very hard in South Carolina to find an example of an employer that provides perpetual healthcare, so after retirement. I would love to see some of those companies that offer that. The one that I know of is the military, right now.
Sheriff can tell you, because he loses deputies to go to other departments in the last five years, and they carry their retirement, you know, their benefits into retirement. That's why he has so many vacancies.
There are counties that do that, still, just to answer your question. There are counties in the state that do that.
We do not want to lose this, this should be under improved customer service, internal customer service, retention of staff through education, promotion, and total compensation.
Right.
This is part of their compensation.
Yes, sir.
There's a cost to the, so it would carry as a liability on the county's books. So when you carry that liability, it's projected out in the actuarial study, so that liability on your books causes a decrease in your net position, which is not necessarily a bad thing, you know, because we have a really healthy net position, so it's not a bad thing, just letting you know what the consequences are of funding that. Now, I'm all about funding it, John and I have talked about it several times in the past, and, you know, savings account was thrown out there, that idea was possibly the county matching, we didn't know how you guys felt about it, but it's good to hear you guys open up about it, so now we understand.
We're going to need presentation from experts in the healthcare field, because this is a costly venture, but again, if you want to have retention of employees who say, "I want to work here because of the benefits," that's an important decision-maker.
Yep.
You know, the feds give you health benefits when you retire, but you make a contribution monthly as well.
Yes, sir.
Now it's about like $400 a month or something.
Yeah.
And they pick up the remainder of it, and there's, I don't know, 50 different health plans you can choose from, you know, that they make available. And of course, they just print the money, so they have plenty of... But I mean, there are ways that people are doing it here in South Carolina, and that's why some of us, that's why we're losing employees.
Yes.
There are tiered retirement systems.
Yeah.
I was part of the retirement system, and then, you know, I was tier one, and then they went to tier two, three, four, now they're at tier five. I get health care to pay for it.
Anyway... In the near future, I can tell you, I met with HR and our insurance provider, and Beaufort County has very, very good benefits, at a very good rate, I'll tell you that for sure, without a doubt. It is incredible what we offer.
If you look at, I'm sorry.
We did specifically, I asked that question, what can we do, what are our opportunities? So we'll come back to you with what those opportunities are, and the finance portion of that is very important, that net position for the county, in year one looks really good, in year 35 could cost more than your operating cost, so it's very important that you see the big picture over time.
It's interesting, on your strategic planning app that you gave Mrs. Evans, I don't know who she is, asked a question. What are your plans, if any, for health insurance with Beaufort County employees who will retire? That's the first thing that popped up on the screen once you opened it up.
Yeah, that's her question.
So it's obviously, and justifiably, a great deal of concern, because you need to have that, and it's an unfortunate situation, when you take it away from people, if they spent 30 years here, and then they have a 10-year gap, and they're on their own. So we really have, we really have to do something.
Yes.
There's one other thing, I just cautioned, I would not like to see us go total HSA, and I'm going to say this, because I do people's taxes that don't, they have high deductible insurance, and then their employer gives them $5,000 for their HSA. $5,000 today covers nothing, if you've got to go to the hospital. So I would not like to see our employees caught in that trap. My son's caught in that trap, and other people in Sun City. I don't want to see us go down that route. If we have good benefits, let's not tread down that road.
The insurance folks, they don't call it an HSA, I just use that as an example.
Couldn't you use HSA money to...
You can, but I'm just saying, you can.
Right.
But if they only give you $5,000 for the year, and you have two children, good luck.
Well, you don't need it until you retire. I'm not talking about getting an insurance policy when you leave and pay the premium out of your HSA.
I'm talking about looking at current healthcare.
I hear you, I think you can do.
Well, my husband works for, I'm sorry.
We'll capture that on the employee slide, I'll make sure that I got...
I think we beat this to death already.
I just want to say my thing, my husband's...
It's a really good conversation, it's important for us to have, and really important for us to understand how complex it is, and we really need to have the full picture to make an educated decision.
Do we have an update on the law enforcement center?
How many years long is it?
We're working on it.
Working on it?
Yes.
All right.
I've had some conversations, it's favorable, and we're moving in that direction. The one thing we are doing right now is a conceptual design.
Okay.
We have, Eric's team has that out for bid for a design engineer to do the conceptual and cost assessment and preliminary design. And then, I think the way it's written too, if we want to move that into full design, we don't have to go back out to RQ, we have to bend there in place.
I know the sheriff is worried about it being another 25 years, because we have a timeline.
Yeah, I was looking at the timeline.
Well, the timeline is, we've got the funds from the leftover funds that are allocated for purchase of the property, we're using those funds, about $250,000 for the preliminary design, conceptual and cost estimating. So to do the full design, you're talking several million, so there will have to be a plan for us to power one and pay for that, and then the construction, obviously, is...
Yeah. Is that grant writer going to be able to look into potential funds for that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
So what is an estimated timeline to get the thing up and running?
It's really about the dollars, 18 months, yeah.
Larry's going to fund it, so...
If you have $400 million in your back pocket, we may have a...
How many?
If it was a federal employee, they'd trade money.
The timeline is a lot less than the amount of money you need to get.
Just as you know, the design element, you're talking 18 months or two years, and then you're ready to put it out bid. And then, a construction is two years too, or something like that.
Two, three years, because you've got to develop the site and the building. Building's probably two-year construction, so two, three years of construction, just to get that built.
What's the estimated cost for construction?
Really depends on what we build.
Just take a stab on it.
$150 million.
Okay.
$115 million?
That's what it'll cost.
All right.
Oh.
All right. Okay. Any save rounds? What's next?
Well, one quickie, and I've heard Scott Marshall talk about it, and I've heard you talk about it. I'd like to see us do a study about fire and safety, north in Beaufort County in Bluffton. I know Bluffton has their own district, but fire district study, and also to include in that, how do we, how do we get there in that study? It's not just, oh, we're all, we're going to consolidate equipment and consolidate personnel, but we've got state laws to deal with because of fire districts, so. I don't know that Hilton Head would even want to be part of that, but I think the rest of the county should be.
Maybe more northern.
I just, I wrote down first responders consolidation, because I think that's where you're going.
We need an analytical study of what we can and can't do.
So, I think that's something we can work on, for sure. I am a fan of understanding that we have talent here, that we have talent within Beaufort County, and within the fire districts and EMS, so we put those people together and begin that discussion, and then, you know, if we get the first baby step in that direction, then we look for an organization that might help us with consolidation. There's a study that's called Making the Pieces Fit, it's from the early 80s, and this is a really good example of consolidation, and it's Miami-Dade. So many years ago, Miami was the smaller, center, urban area, and Dade County surrounded it. When they decided to consolidate those services, they moved the municipal lines to within one foot of the county line, so Miami-Dade is that whole consolidated county.
Well, Jacksonville, Florida, where I grew up, Columbus, Georgia, Athens, Georgia, they did consolidation studies of certain services, and then they decided to take it further, so.
There's many examples of that consolidation that have worked, and some right in South Carolina, specifically for fire districts and emergency services, so it's certainly worth a look.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Just keep in mind that ladies out in St. Helmut, we're fine.
Yes, sir.
Are you ready?
Those you do not want.
All right. Are we ready to break for lunch?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Great, thanks so much. It's a little break for lunch, I don't know. One o'clock?
Yeah, one o'clock.
One o'clock, sounds good. One o'clock, sounds good. First, I think there's still quite a few sandwiches in there. I appreciate clerk of council staff for getting lunch together for us and making sure we're well cared for. There might even still be some coffee left from this morning if I didn't drink at all. I'm pretty good at coffee. So we left before lunch, finishing up the health and safety slide. We captured quite a few things from here. This afternoon, we have three slides left for us to work on and talk about. I don't know if you noticed, but at one point while you were discussing, I kind of snuck off over here in the corner and was just observing. And I wanted to really thank you for the conversation. Council having conversations with each other and discussing these issues and letting staff eavesdrop on your conversation and capture the value out of it is exactly what I was looking for today. So I appreciate your commitment to the process and participating in the conversation. So this afternoon, we're going to start with invest in economy. We talked about these topics earlier, medical services, connection to military, workforce, education and workforce, economic development. I remind you again that staff is pushing forward in all of these areas. We have different programs and things that we're working on. We're asking you to prioritize these and help us understand what your vision is for staff to push forward, where we can find opportunities to fund those visions and get those in our budget to move forward in the next year. We are using this information to create our short-term plan, our short-term strategic goal, and our long-term strategic plan, that 25- and 30-year plan out in the future. So we'll continue to grow on these ideas and add to them and develop more. As long as we keep the fundamentals, we can continue to improve. So, invest in the economy. You chose education and workforce as your priority for Beaufort County to focus on. Who's first?
John, can I just throw-
Absolutely.
It's unbelievable that became number one today because this morning I sent an email out on TCU, or TCL, where Dave and I had a couple of meetings with Mary Lou and Richard. You want to talk about-
Dr. Goff, yeah.
Yeah, you want to talk about a legacy. If we can get behind that and understand really what they can do for us, that investment in that center can really set Beaufort off. I mean, David, I mean, you had an independent meeting as well. I think TCL could be a major player for us if we can understand exactly what they want to do, raise that money. And again, I go back to ARPA, I go back to other things, but I think that's incredible that it's number one.
So to kind of fill you in what he's talking about, they're asking for an investment from the county in order to build a workforce education center. I believe it's at the New River site.
It says New River Site.
And apparently the state has already allocated $10 million for this project. They're asking if we can come up with 10 million as well. I know that's a huge ask. I don't know, I think they're looking for other partners as well. But I think that's something we need to, I think that'd be a good investment. I think John O'Toole with our Economic Development Corporation's on board as well. And I've asked, we're going to try to get a presentation on the public facilities agenda for March 25th, so hopefully they can come in and give us more information about the entire program.
They could do it at community services.
Have them do it, it's fine with me.
But they also are going to get a lot of, I'm the liaison at TCL, so just as a disclaimer, I don't sound like I know it all. But they are going to try to get local matching dollars for furniture, like they did for the Culinary Institute. They'll make a big ask of local donors too, throughout the county and elsewhere.
Alice, one of the key things that they're going to look at, which we've not really focused on a lot, is keeping these young kids that get through these schools, keep them local, keep the youth here. And that would solve a number of other problems that we have with staffing on all levels. So, again, if you have not met with Richard or Mary Lou, take a few minutes to meet with them. They really have a vision that can help us create a legacy, not us, but for the future that could really help us in many ways. So, thank you, Alice, for all that you're doing. Getting us educated on that, so.
Coinciding with that, one and two go together. You can't have one without two. You can't have two without one. So it's like one and one. John O'Toole at Converge presented what the Beaufort County Economic Development Corporation is zeroing in on because of what Beaufort County has to offer. We don't have the industries that other counties are going after because we don't have the land to put them on. So we're going at other industries. That ties into the education and workforce that TCL needs to provide because we're going after the aerospace industries, the back offices, those kinds of businesses that require certain skill sets. We have to get ready for the future, as we said, for what is happening over the next 30 years. Look what's going to come over the next 30 years. Because I-95 gets widened to three lanes, all the way up and down, we're going to have more businesses that want to come to this area because of the transportation, easy to get to. So there will be training for individuals to help construct those, maintain those kinds of facilities. So those two go together. And continuing on that, our military, we have the number of people from military finishing their tours of duty, looking to stay in this area. There is that transition training that they need to go from the experience they had in security, in cyber, that they can work in industries that are here, and that's a working relationship with education. There, so that goes.
Certainly. So, I don't know if we stalled here. It's just after lunch. In the last few months, TCL's staff from TCL has come and met with us and talked with executive staff about the New River campus. We've met with USCV and their convention center, I guess, or convocation center that they have described. We've had requests from other education agencies that are looking for some funds for perpetual funds, for three to four years over time, for different programs to support students from Beaufort County that go to their education and hopefully come back to Beaufort County to work. There are some opportunities for us to consider, how do we let Beaufort County support these programs? If they come back, if they come to Beaufort County and suggest, is there an opportunity we can bond dollars to help them? Is there a revenue bond opportunity? Are those things that you're interested in us looking?
Well, we're trying to get it on the finance committee this last call round. We said public facilities, I said community, it's actually finance. But TCL is really making effort to talk to all the council members too, so it should go to finance committee, definitely, because I guess it would have to be bonded. So, but they will make an effort to talk to all the council members to, one-on-one, as much as they can, before then.
So if that's something that you're interested in, looking at opportunities to help these organizations, $10 million is a lot of money. There's an opportunity that Beaufort County can, we can speak with our bond attorney, we can see what kind of options that we have, we can ask our bond attorney to make those presentations to you. The USCV's convocation center should be a profit center, so there may be an opportunity there for a revenue bond, or some other unique way that we can help them and benefit us over time. So if you're interested in that, or want to explore those, we'll bring in our experts to help us with that.
Yeah, and Dr. Pino is willing to come and present-
Absolutely.
... ideas of the convocation center. Because it's more than an educational center. It is revenue generating because there is a sweet spot. If you go to Savannah, the arena there is up to 10,000 people. There are certain functions that they won't hold because they're a little too small. Sweet spot is 5,000. So 0 to 5,000 is what we could capture to bring in athletics, entertainment, those kinds of things that could be as the revenue source to that.
There's some additional opportunity in both of these structures, and it is with disaster recovery and emergencies.
Oh, that's exactly what he wants to do. He wants that to be a cat five building that could house enough people during that age.
Exactly. So there's opportunity to exploit other dollars for the same building that has additional purposes, additional uses.
Uses, yes. One more point before you take that down. Medical services, it goes to what you talked about on your presentation. Some of you knew that many of the older people live with, like me, live on the island. One of the common themes that's raised constantly is that we have incredible doctors, nurses and staff, I mean, the top-notch, but they don't have the space or the help that they need. So I hope that we can target that as well as we look forward. I mean, it will only increase the need for that type of service. So, take a look at the island, what we're going through.
I could see two other on the list of things that belong with investment in economy. I see utilities, because if we do not have the utilities, whether it's water, sewer, gas, electric, you can't do economic development. You can't bring businesses here if there is no water and sewer for them. So I think utilities is an important concept there, as far as infrastructure goes. The second thing, housing. We have to invest in housing because we're going to develop the economy, places for them to work. Well, they need a place to live. So all of those tie into those again. The theme is, they're not necessarily number one here. It may be they're number one someplace else, and it affects what's in this one.
And I'd say one of the things regarding economic development, we've had a meeting about a conference center north of the Broad. I know that would be years down the road, but I think now is the time to start planning for it as well, because I think that'd be a huge economic driver in the northern part of the county.
You need the infrastructure.
Why do you need a conference center north of the Broad?
It's not necessarily needed, but-
Well, how like a large hotel that has a conference center.
Right, and we don't really have that right now. There are some planes out there, no, not north of the Broad, there are some planes out there, but I don't think anything's-
Oh.
-really come to fruition yet.
That was the large, the high school I think that holds the most is 800, that's at Battery Creek.
A thousand.
Does one at Battery Creek hold a thousand?
That's what it was built for.
Yeah, a thousand, so that's the largest group. So that's the largest group gathering you can have in Beaufort County. Yeah.
Again, remember, we're looking out 30 years. Things are gonna be a lot different 30 years from now. So no matter what, it may not happen year two, three, or four, but it may happen year 15 to 20. So nothing, you know, it's like, now that's impossible. Well, it's only possible because it isn't possible yet. You still have to remember that.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna put on the...we haven't talked about, you have here the diversifying the county tax base, so I'm gonna look to Mr. O'Toole to bring to us a product development for the county. And I would love to see at least 20, 25% of our tax base in commercial property. That's what I'd love to see.
If there's an increase in commercial development in commercial properties, that would be awesome.
Well, 25% of our tax base being...
Oh, I know it. I know it. All right. So we can set that as...
I think right now is only 5% of the...
Right.
But we left...
Well, it's there that, there will be cause. We made that commitment.
There you go.
How to get there.
And you said 30 years from now.
That's right.
There's a...the Robeco Brownfield, I guess what I call it. It's just kinda...I'd like to know more update about that, or if it's a debt, or if it's never gonna happen, just one way or the other.
We can certainly ask Mr. O'Toole to come in during one of our committee meetings, and he will...he's got plans.
Okay.
We've had a few opportunities there, but certainly we've had some conversations about the opportunity there.
I'd just like an update, yeah.
And Danny Black would come and tell us about what's happening along the I-95 corridor that will have a dramatic impact on us, because there's Point South, there's stuff along the Jasper County line border that will have a dramatic impact on us.
And Florida.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. I went on I-16 this past week, and you know, it goes for my, literally, I think, three miles, the Honda plant in Bryan County.
Yes.
I tried to measure it while we were on I-16. Their own water tower, their own hospital, it's just...and this is like 50 miles from here? So, yeah.
It's incredible sprawling.
Right.
Spreading.
Which is another point.
We're gonna lose people.
That people will go, as far as they need to for a job that will pay them well, with a great compensation, so they'll go and out it work.
Didn't he say 8,000 jobs there?
Yeah.
I mean, the Hyundai plant.
What's gonna take place?
Well, as Chairman just mentioned, Danny Black and Southern Carolina Lions, he just...we just got the company from Vietnam to come in and make good side, good tires, which is huge. And also Allendale County.
Yeah. Yeah, all the plants are gonna come around us. Our focus is gonna be slightly different for Beaufort County.
We can train them all.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we're gonna have the corporate headquarters, we're gonna have the upper echelons, but the factories themselves, factories, commercial properties, these large conglomerations like Hyundai plans, we don't have the land for that. That's in Jasper, Hampton, Barnwell, Colliton, those counties along the I-95 corridor.
Nice.
Okay.
All right, we have the post-lunch tiredness going on here. See, that's real exciting this morning. There you go.
Wait, this was exciting? Oh, that's okay.
So we've got some good notes on investing in the economy, and honestly, as we look at each of these lines, almost everything that we do is somehow connected to our economy. When we help people, when we help each other, we improve investment in Beaufort County, which helps our economy.
Right.
Yeah?
I'd like to mention one more thing. We know it's coming, we're just unaware. It has to do with military and medical services, is they're gonna build a VA clinic, which will bring some more people to Beaufort County. It will be in Beaufort County, so that will be...and a service to residents too, so that'd be good.
Yeah.
Are you good?
Yeah.
All right. Next slide, are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to think more, to thank our staff who put them together for us. They are pretty cool. All right, culture and community. Again, these are all things that the Beaufort County staff is already working on. Culture and community crosses a few things for us. This is back to our strategic plan, to our vision of connect, manage, and support. There's certainly a connection here, and Beaufort County's position, or Beaufort County's efforts here is to support these. We talked about our passive parks a little bit, that we have some beautiful property that it's time for us to talk about investing in those properties, so we continue to preserve them, to protect them, to protect the watershed areas, and develop those into places that folks really want to visit. Preservation, we're doing a great job. We have a bunch of programs out there already. If our transportation sales goes through, then we'll have a green belt to add to our already active programs. And we, of course, are making great progress with our libraries, and all of these things improve our tourism and attract people to Beaufort. So.
All of those around the three words, quality of life.
Yes, absolutely. So you chose passive parks as your priority. What priority or what action would you like to see Beaufort County staff take to help our passive parks?
Well, certainly, we have passive parks that are on the books right now. We have to ensure that we have money to maintain those parks. Second, we have land that could be passive parks. We need to know which pieces of land should be developed next.
2048, I just wanna...
Yeah, I agree with Joe said, because all land that we have really doesn't have to be developed.
Right.
You know, we can actually...one of the comments that was made by the guy who runs the infrastructure conservation, Roddy West.
Mistake.
Roddy West said that he would love to see a conservation corridor from the Aspason to the Savannah River. That's major. So I'm with that, and so within the county, we also need to make sure that we have land for wildlife. I mean, that's...just leave it alone, let wildlife have its way. One of the problems we're having as farmers is that 30 years ago, deer was never a problem. It is a major problem now for farms.
Yes, it is.
And they're putting up high fences, et cetera, et cetera. Makes it almost impossible for anybody with a small garden to try to even raise anything without the deer and stuff. So we just, we need to leave home for them, habitat for them as well and stuff. So I'm just gonna go with Mr. Passive that we need to plan certain passive parks, but we don't need to do all our parks, a mile of land and stuff in there. Yeah. And we just need to do...
A light footprint, a light touch or a small footprint on some of the parks.
So conversely, did that go into what your arrow says? I would like us to build, to use some of these passive parks to be active parks. I'm gonna go back to my water park, or whatever you wanna call it, but we have a lot of...Denise sent us the properties we own. I'm stunned scrolling through it, I had no idea. And you can't just have a passive park, there's maintenance there, as Joe said, we gotta pay to maintain it. So I also would like to see some of them developed as a tourism draw, however you wanna do it, we need to put money there. That means that we can't just all be passive parks.
Right.
There need to be some other things happening too.
Well, I think we go back to our recreation.
Yeah.
Where, like Burden Wells has a lot of land that's undeveloped, and there's others, places too, but, yeah.
We have a staff member here, her name is Kelsey. Do we know her? She's in with the GIS, she makes maps and all. I'm trying to learn this Beaufort County a little bit better, and I've asked her to put together, and she's sent me the first draft, of all the parks that we have, where they are, and all the passive. I'll get that out to everybody, because I gotta tell you, it's a nice thing to see what we're doing. I'm gonna have an overlay in that, once we get the green space protected, we'll have what's green space, what's parks, what's passive. And I think you're gonna see, you know, I hope that this council goes down as one of the most hungry for protecting property that any council's been here. And I think by seeing that, I couldn't believe how many parks and passive parks we have in Beaufort. So I'll send that to you.
I think it's great to have passive parks, but I'm gonna pretend I'm Logan for a minute. He's 30 years younger, but whatever. Logan would tell you, south of the Broad, we need fields, we need ball fields, we need parks for kids to go to. That's where the population growth is right now, it's exploding, and we can't accommodate it with our current facility.
If you take a look at what's available just in passive parks, collectively, really come together and say, we can take a few of these and do that.
Well, that's my point.
We've got to know what we have, though, and I didn't know that until I put that app together.
I think the legislation, I don't think we can.
Oh, is that right?
On the ones that were required with open, with rural critical lands.
Yeah, you can't touch.
Yeah, you can't touch, yeah.
We just, we have to be very careful with the parks and the funds that we used to purchase them.
Oh, yeah, I'm excited.
I'm not saying there's not opportunity out there, because I'm sure there is when we look at that long list. But we need to evaluate each piece of property and what can be done, depending on how we purchase that.
That long list Denise sent us, there's probably some that...that long list that Denise sent us, I think.
Oh, I'm sure. And it's, you know, for example, we couldn't put ball fields on the one off 170. It's rural critical lands. So we do know that. But Burden Wells is a giant place.
It is.
There's opportunity for stuff there. It's just that that's pretty far for the other part of the county. But it's a beautiful facility out there.
But you can still have passive recreation at these rural and critical properties, and that's tourism.
And we should look.
Boe Landings, kayak landings, all kinds of stuff.
I do have a separate list on our fixed assets listing that separates it by departments.
That's what I was asking, the kayaks.
Should we say something, Joe?
Yes, under preservation, one of the things that we should explore here, because of the amount of water we have, is setting up an estuary. Then around the United States, we have the best opportunity here, and we don't have one.
And Joe, I think I sent you some of the information. I think Warren reached out to you.
Yes.
I'm gonna...we're actually working on that right now, to try to get this established as a national estuary, part of that program.
Yeah.
So bring us some appetite in there.
Yeah, and you have to remember the Port Royal Sound Foundation, they've done a lot of work on that, too. I don't have that organization separate, but...
Dick Stewart's in this organization as well.
Yeah, the two of them.
And...
That's what the Port Royal Sound is, is an estuary, basically.
Yeah, this is a part of the National Estuary Program.
Yes, and they tried to get it designated.
There's an huge gap between the Northeast and Florida. There's nothing...North Carolina has a couple, I think, of American Sound.
There were several people tried to get that done before, and I hope they get it done again.
We'll pick it back up, so I'll get it.
Yeah. One of them's deceased now, but he was one of the founders of the Port Royal Sound Foundation.
Again, Beaufort County could be yet another leader in preservation, and this is one of those.
And it does carve out the Aspason, so the Aspason would still be its own, obviously, entity and protected area, but this would identify this area to be protected as well. And one of the things, though, going back to the passive parks, do we have any update for, in particular, Pine View and any of the other passive parks under development?
Yeah, we could put together a synopsis of where we are. We're gonna be asking for CIP funds to put in, for ATAX grants, we're actively looking for money. The biggest hurdle right now, we have a plan for all of those properties, the biggest hurdle is the funding. We get the funding, we can build, we have concept plans, we have a plan laid out for these rural critical properties. Green space is sort of self-funded, because we can use green space money to build parks on green space, green space-acquired properties, but rural critical, we have money to buy them, but not to develop them. So it really is the dollar that's...
So didn't Stephanie bring forward a long-range plan for developments of these properties?
Yes, we'll send that out, it's on our website. We'll send it out.
So you may wanna send it out.
It's one of the things in the budget process that'll come up. When we start to look at the budget presentations for those departments, you'll see some funds in there included for the short-term and long-term plan. What can we get done this year with a finite amount of dollars, and then what can we do over the next few years to improve or manage some of these passive and active parks?
And going back to estuary, I don't know that that will take any dollars, it's a designation you try to get. It's not something that we probably need to think about as far as our budget goes, but coordination with Port Royal Sound Foundation. Wildlife corridors are gonna fit in, go back to what York just said, the military has a lot of matching dollars that they have now, that they can use for wildlife corridor and protection of areas around them, both Paris Island and the air station, and that'll help a lot if we look at areas on the other side of Paris Island, or even into Jasper County and other areas, they will have matching dollars to preserve those wildlife corridors. So it's not just our money, it's matching dollars, so.
Do you have a company that does that?
No, volunteers.
Volunteers. Residents.
Yeah. Yeah, the bird clubs is a huge...
Bird club.
Oh, yeah, they know everything about the species.
Bird count, a lot of other people monitor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we have some exciting things here. What we talked about around the passive parks is maintenance, maintenance dollars of those parks. So our passive parks team will come forward with those budget requests for what's next year, and then what's after that, what's next, what's the long-term plan coming forward. And I think it's very important that we recognize managing our wildlife habitat. We talk about that a lot when we talk about passive and active parks, but there certainly we can...we have a naturalist on staff at this point, and it's really important that we remember the wildlife habitat is important for us to protect in these properties as well.
Before you leave there, preservation, I think we also need to just highlight preserving the culture as well.
Yes, sir.
You know, that's something that we wanna protect as much as we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it shouldn't be just passive parks, it's parks and recreation, because some of the lands we have, although they can't be used for active, they can be trails.
Sure.
Mountain bike.
That's true. Yeah, those kinds of things. I think that's essential. Okay, we're done. I'm done.
We have parks and recreation on this one.
Yes, we do.
All together, yeah.
A question before we leave here. Tab, I know you talked about the ATAX for tourism, kind of maybe focusing more on our projects. I think that's a discussion we need to have, as what that looks, are we gonna try to shift everything over to our needs, are we going to phase it out? I think that's a discussion that we need to have later.
Well, that's the whole purpose of taking a look at the current ordinance we have and what may be proposed, and how we would use those funds, because our municipalities use the local ATAX much differently than we do. We do have a lot of needs in unincorporated Beaufort County that we could take advantage of.
So it's on the finance committee agenda, it will be for February 20th, and that meeting will begin at 1:00, so we can end at a reasonable time for some of us to get up to Columbia, because we're not... Cause we're not allowed to drive in the dark. But the whole ATAX thing and Brian and Kevin, they've all been working and John. We've all been talking about how to redo the ordinance because it's in our ordinance and we have to file. And then Brian matched it up with state law. So we have to be in sync.
I'm.
It's all coming to you guys on the 20th.
That's a great opportunity for the use of, of local ATAX dollars.
Right. It'll make those people.
We need to seize change. Yeah.
Actually, the two Cs I wrote, first thing this meant were change and creativity.
Right.
Because if you're creative, you're gonna end up with change. If you're looking to change, you're gonna be creative. And that's where we're gonna go with some of them.
Joe, so I'm, uh, in the past, there was some, no, you gotta bring it back up. There was some talk about, um, the hundred acres or so we have on Ladies Island turning B turned into a bike trail of some sort.
The nineteen?
No.
No, that was one person's idea.
Three nights in a hotel.
Oh.
Yeah, it can be a trip.
Yeah, that's, I was just wondering what the.
Okay. I'd like to see what's gonna happen to that.
Chuck knows.
Yeah, we're looking at the conference right now.
Where's it defined?
And that's one of the ones that we're asking for ATAX money and CIP funds to improve that part in particular.
Ladies Island.
Is it bike trails?
It's not a bike trail.
It's not a bike trail. It's just like the rest of our parks.
Yeah, the conference is on the 20th.
But yeah, give access to that lower piece of law for probably.
Okay.
An improved trail.
Okay.
All right. Here's the, here's the last one. We are, we are making good time this afternoon.
Oh, there, I'm gonna get there.
This is the, um, this is the introspective, um, part. This is how, how can county staff work together better? How can we work together to serve the public better? There are a lot of departments that aren't necessarily forward facing departments, so that don't interact with the public directly. However, the work that they do behind the scenes is critical to what the, to the, the services the public receives. So we had, I just kind of broke them down into external customer service and internal customer service. What in your experience, when, when folks have a complaint and they can't get it resolved, they go right to the top. They come right to you and say, help me solve this. And then you send me that message and then I call one of the ACAs and then it goes downhill. And we get those problems resolved instead of that customer being, being able to come right in, identify that problem and get them resolved at the lowest level possible. They happen at the highest level possible and go backwards. Now, those are isolated incidents, I think. You know, we do have 200,000 residents. And we probably all, well, I, I might get quite a few kind of issues a week. Hopefully you don't get that many. But they're all important. So what's common that you've seen that we can capture and make better?
I have, I have a short list. One thing is people are reluctant to inform on their neighbors of things that are code enforcement related. And I, I give the code enforcement people in Chuck full credit. I can report something through them. And the anonymous neighbor is semi, is protect, feels protected.
Yeah.
Or I can enable them to take, ensure them that their name won't be used and they can call code enforcement directly. So code enforcement is a big deal. The other thing I've heard in the last year is the start time for county council from constituents. If they work, um, five o'clock is too early for them. It's, it's not too early, but it's hard for them to get here and time to sign up for public comment. Some of them don't get off till they can't come. Granted, they can watch it on TV and they, they know that and they can watch it numerous times. But the start time, I would really like to see it go back to six o'clock. And then the last thing which I have no, no, um, I hear complaints about the two departments who are headed by elected officials that close at 4:30. The auditor's office and the treasurer's office. They say if they could just stay open till five o'clock, it would help them. Our other county offices, as far as I know, are all open till five o'clock. Maybe not public works, but the public doesn't interact with public works. So I don't consider that an issue. But, um, and I'm not, I, you know, but I just have heard that, that the, once COVID went away, they really wish they had rotated their employees so that somebody in the office would be open until five o'clock. Those are my shortlist things. Okay.
Well, those are, those are things I can have conversations with.
But we have no control.
County council start time, we can bring that to a committee and allow committee to make a recommendation and take that back to, to council to see. I don't have issue with that. That's, that's a big council decision. Then, and company issues, of course, we manage routinely. So.
They're great job on code issues.
What, what else? I saw your hand.
Well, you know, internal.
Yes, sir.
Um, I think if we focus on improving internal structure, you know, external is gonna probably take care of itself most of the time. So, you know, we talked about a one stop shop, one time, you know, and people just don't know where to go, what to do. I don't know how you handle it, but if we can improve the internal, it's been only, uh, customer service has been on every.
Every year.
Yeah, yeah. So we gotta work toward that end. Let me just tell you personally, I know Octavia and Marilla is always probably fed up with me because when I call in the county number, I don't get no answer. Okay? It just rang and put me on hold and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so I've basically hang up and I call them and say, hey, can you get me to so and so and so? Now, I'm on the outside calling in. I don't know how many other people are doing that. But if we can handle just the phone and, and then having somebody on that telephone answer as quickly as possible or be able to get back to that person. Beaufort Jasper Water Authority is working on that and they basically improving their system. But if somebody calls this county, they should be able to get an answer.
Real person.
And I sit there and hold. And then like me, I know if I hold too long, I just call.
That's what, that gives good input. I don't think I've tried to call the county.
Well, you just keep trying.
I need to try that and see how.
Call the county and see what you can.
Absolutely.
If we can improve that.
And which?
We've got the same complaints.
Really?
On the.
Are we in the main number?
On the Q and A that, on the phone that happened, that we just did. Somebody had asked about the front desk in here.
Right.
Is that gonna be staffed?
Oh, well, we lose the staff member from there. Uh, so we have a remodeling project that's going on that that whole lobby is going to change. The staff member was placed there probably a few years ago, maybe two years ago was there. Say again? During COVID was, was there. Um, so we were really trying to be more efficient in that space. There is, uh, and I think about the DMV. Uh, everybody's been to the DMV and years ago you went to the DMV and you waited in the long line. You got to the counter, you find out you didn't have the paper you needed, so you had to go back. Or, or they wouldn't take a check or you couldn't get a credit card or you, you know. And now they have this great system.
Yeah.
They have the concierge that sits right at the desk and says, how can I help you?
Yeah.
Do you have all these things? And you don't get in line if you don't have all the things that you need. Now, I'm not saying we need a concierge service, uh, but something that is more holistic that helps people understand what they need, where they need to go, when they arrive. Uh, maybe there's a, maybe there's a technology solution for that. Uh, maybe there's, uh, you know, uh, what we've talked about, a, a big screen in the lobby that someone can just come into and here's what I need to do today. I push this button. Here's all the forms that I need. Here's why I can collect all those forms. Um, you know, here's the office number I need to, to go to. I don't know, many years ago, um, I was, uh, when I was living in Rhode Island, I remember going to a hospital and I walked in the front door of the hospital and I had to go to a specific place. There's nowhere, I had nowhere going around. They had a colored line on the floor and they said, if you wanna go to the radiology. I followed a red line all over the building and I ended up there.
Yeah.
It was really kind of neat. But that is just a simple customer service thing that helps folks get where they need to go. We can be creative and find a way to help our customers, uh, to help our customers to serve them better. So.
I want to reiterate what Mr. Glover said because I've tried to call numerous offices and I too end up with, I'll go back to the, I'm not like Julia or Sarah. But just recently to help a constituent, I tried the assessor, I tried the auditor, I tried the treasurer. All left, you know, all went to voicemail. And I can tell you, it's just frustrating because your average person doesn't know, who do I call next? So I can't get the assessor and then I send an email cause I know they get email. But your average person out in the world is like, well, nobody answers the phone.
Do we have a switchboard operator or?
Yeah, that's my next question.
Anything like that?
We do, we do.
Where are they?
Who, who don't answer?
That's right.
Where are they located?
There's one here and I think that number also transfers to an employee that works in the Hilton Head building.
He'll head admin answers the, the switchboard.
He'll head admin?
But how is it none of us have ever been able to connect?
She answers 255-1000. Is that the number you all are calling?
No. Well, generally we call a particular office and nobody answers, goes voicemail. Then you call the 5,000 and nobody answers.
Like, I know even our.
It's just frustrating.
If somebody doesn't answer the phone at any one of those locations, our automatic answering service.
5,000.
They take the message and send an email out.
Rolls out.
I don't know.
Gonna roll over.
And we're, you know, we're just.
255-1000 is the, is the county main number and she answers the phone and she will forward the citizen to the correct department. Now that department doesn't answer, that's when she forwards it on, it's beyond her cap point.
They're answering initially.
But that's a customer service issue for real people.
Well, certainly dig into and see what we can do, what we can do differently. What else? Yes, sir.
Uh, external customer service, we have to take a look at our website. See what improvements we can do on our website. You take a look at websites all over the country. Some of them are very sophisticated, um, some are not. So we just need to modernize ours a little bit. And the internal customer service, what we talked about this morning regarding pension and benefits.
Yes, and continuity between pages. You click on one department, it looks completely different. And then some pages and links don't even work. It goes to a 404.
Right.
Um, yeah, that might not, might not be a bad idea to look at that again.
Yeah. And even our own webpage, um, you know, it's a year later. You wanna update some things. It's difficult for us to do. So, yeah.
Council's webpage.
Yeah.
I can give you a positive about the webpage.
Please, I like positives.
Nobody laugh. You can easily locate everyone that's incarcerated, when they were incarcerated and if they're still there. Cause I just looked up one for some sudden city. Tells you when they were incarcerated, if they're still there, when they released on bail and what they did.
I do it every day.
Not you. He's laughing at me.
We're the hearts of positives too.
It's easy to navigate.
It's really easy to watch. It's really easy to watch past meetings. I've had constituents that are like, are you sure that was? I said, here, let me send you the link. And they're like, oh, yeah, I can watch it.
You're right about that.
And you can, you can watch it as it happens and after it happens.
There's a lot of good on our website.
Yeah, that was really easy.
Okay. One thing we have to fix is yet again today. Spectrum did not work. Hargray did. There's something wrong. Either with Spectrum, the way we hook up to Spectrum. Yes, I know you can use your computer, you can use your app, but a lot of people don't have those devices. They only have a TV. And so we're missing out.
Yeah, that, that can be troublesome. Although during the break, I checked with our broadcasting team and they said Spectrum was back up. Well, Spectrum said they were back up, so, yeah.
Another positive, our broadcast team, they broadcast Hilton Head, Bluffton meetings. I mean, that's really beneficial to all of our residents. You know, if I don't wanna go out to Hilton Head, I can watch their town council.
Right.
So same as they can watch here, they also do Bluffton.
I, I have a question. I don't know, somebody, historian, if you can tell me. When was the last time there's been a whole, a comprehensive review of our ordinances? Has that ever happened?
It depends when you bring them up.
Yes.
Well, I would, I would like to, I know that's one of the things that I, when I first came on, I wanted to look, basically do an omnibus review. I don't know if we need a subcommittee, but go talk about the year of change. Go through our ordinances, see what works, what doesn't work. Maybe make things easier on staff, uh, the interpretation of those things. You know, if we can clean up some of the, some of the language, find out what works, what doesn't work, we can make it easier on staff, which will make it better on the, the external customer service side.
I think you volunteered.
I, I, absolutely, yes. I would volunteer.
I see Brian hiding behind the leaves.
Yes, go ahead.
You see him hiding back there?
Yeah, I can't see him at all.
Yeah, so I can address that. Um, so they're all sort of categorized by function. I know the solid waste and recycling, large.
Thanks. Solid waste and recycling. Uh, we just updated that ordinance. Code enforcement, we just updated. Uh, we did a complete overhaul both in 1999 and in 2014 of the CDC or what we used to call the, um, the zoning code, if you will. Building codes is updated every three years. So some of them are cyclical per state law. We just came through a huge update with our impact fee ordinance. So when you look at them as all of the ordinances, some of them are on a cycle. Some of them, um, you, you figure out that you have a missing piece or a need because it's just outdated. We update them. I think the ones that are, uh, not updated cyclically are the general provisions. And we can probably go back, look at some of those, uh, from a high level review. But most of them are on a routine schedule where they are updated. Uh, but you really have to dig down and break the table of contents apart to, to see all of those. Our flood ordinance was done in 2019, so, um, and that's recurring about every 10 years. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it.
And there are others that have been worked on too. Uh, the impact fee took us seven years to get all that done, but that's because we had to get agreement from all of the, um, other political entities. But the procurement code is in the process of being done and it's gonna come forward at the end of the month. The ATAX, H-Tax, we've worked on and that's coming forward on the 20th, in the finance committee, I guess it's the 20th.
We're gonna have to change it to the 26.
26, yeah, I just put that in to the system. We've, um, we had to redo the road fee because of, of the case that the Supreme Court decided a couple summers ago. We just redid the animal ordinance. Or is coming forward. So, you know, it's interesting that you mentioned that because the legal department is actually of the same mind. And we're actually in the process of going through that right now.
Good enough.
Yep.
There's a lot to do. It'll probably take the, the remainder of the year to get through everything, to review them all. And we'll find a lot that needs updated. So we'll be coming to council for.
Cause I know we've had issues with, you know.
Purchasing.
Yeah, yeah, figuring out exactly which way to go with certain plans.
And I'd like to put a plug in, the, um, one for Reese, for the, what we call the bag ordinance. We're working on the, keep Beaufort Committee is working on some recommended revisions to that cause we've lessons learned on that one. That's been many years since we passed.
Yeah, it was years ago. We passed it and, and, um, yeah, I think we're supposed to be bringing forward, um, updates about the effectiveness of that ordinance, but I don't know.
It's hard to measure. It's very hard to measure, but we've got some recommendations for changes. Yeah.
And that, that C was one of the Cs that we need to take a look at, codes.
Codes.
Well, I see, uh, Mr. Mr. Dawson's online.
He's on there.
How are you, sir?
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good to see you.
Glad to finally be able to break away.
Yeah, here.
As far as reading, I don't know exactly where we are in the, in the presentation process of the budget. But I do have a couple of.
Certainly. We're gonna, we're gonna get your volume turned up a little bit. And, uh, we can hear you, but you're very, very light right now. He's, if you can hear me, Mr. Dawson, we're gonna get the volume turned up on, on, um, on your, um, speaker there so we can hear you a little better. He's working on it right now.
All right, good.
Well, while he's fixing that, I have one other thing. I don't know if there's any appetite to it. I know I've talked to a few people. You know, we've, we've sat here time and time again, talk about all the needs and the, basically the money that needs to be spent here. But I'd like to do something to help small business out. And I know one thing, uh, that I've had several people talk to me about is getting. And I know one thing that I've had several people talk to me about is getting rid of the business personal property tax. And I don't know if the juice is worth the squeeze on that, I don't know if that creates more work for staff, and I really don't know where the cutoff could be if we, if we keep it for the larger corporations, but get rid of it for, you know, the small business. I don't know what that looks like, but I don't know if there'd be any appetite to dive into that.
I think that's something we can, we can look at and bring to Finance Committee and talk about what the, what the impact of that might look like.
Daniel, I, I second that because I have a lot of constituents that are small businesses and they complain to me that if they have, if they do business in Hilton Head, town of Bluffton, or Buford County, they have to pay, for the business license, they have to pay on each one they have to pay. It's a lot of money if you're a small business.
This is a separate business personal property tax. It's a tax on the property that your business owns.
Fixtures, desks, lamps.
Partner revenue, that actually comes through the state, we will be happy to give you all of the information and make a presentation.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I didn't know that.
I don't have a microphone, I'll go over here. So what I was saying is that the personal property tax comes through the state and then we just collect it. So what we'll do is we can put a presentation together, we'll work with Mr. Cad and our business license staff and we will make a full presentation and let everyone know how that process works, what our role is, what is mandated by the state, and what we can and can't do, so.
Because aren't we one of six counties that, that actually has it? I think the other one's gone.
Are you talking about business license?
Business license.
So there's a, there's a difference in business license and the collection of the personal, personal property tax. It's, there are many layers to this topic. So we'll, we'll put together a presentation, we'll bring all the players forward, we can lay it all out in detail, and then, you know, the portions that the county does control, you'll, you can make whatever decision you want on that and we'll, we'll do that very soon.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Chuck.
Mr. Dawson, will you, will you give it a shot and see if we can hear you well?
Hi, how am I coming over now?
Yes, sir, perfect.
Okay.
The floor is yours.
All right, thank you. I, I apologize for having to miss three quarters of the meeting today, but I had another funeral and I'm sure the chairman has already explained to everybody that I had another funeral with my neighbor next door to me, they funerated their five-year-old daughter today and I just wanted to be present and show my support for the family. And I asked Larry, I gave Larry two items to address based on recreation, if you all got to cover recreation before I got in the meeting, and so, Larry, you, you come with that?
Yes, Larry, good.
Thank, thank you very much, I appreciate that. The only, only other item I have is that it's been reported to me that we have a situation where our homeless people are throughout the county, but basically those south of the Broad, Hilton Head to be more specific, when they are arrested and brought to the Buford County Jail, they're incarcerated for a given period of time. Upon their release, they are released in the city of Buford and not taken back over to the homeless shelter that they have in Hilton Head. And so, then it becomes the responsibility of them to find help and any resource they can while they're over here on this side, on north side of the Broad, in hopes of ever getting back over to their homeless position at Hilton Head. We, we have that issue and we need to address that. I had mentioned that to a, to a chairman passment sometime ago, maybe about a month and a half, two months ago, and, and we never got around to addressing it, so I thought this would be a good time to address the full council.
Yes, sir, your, your statement is accurate, that when, when someone is incarcerated in our detention center and they're released, they are released right out the front door. And I know the Colonel and, and the Major have worked with a few churches and other local groups that helped to provide those, those folks that need transportation back to their area, but I, I can't, I can't, I don't, I don't know that there's 100% of compliance with that. A lot of folks are picked up by family members or acquaintances, but there are a number of people that are released that just don't have anyone out there to help them. So oftentimes, there are the volunteer agencies that try to support them. So I can talk with the Colonel and, and the Major about that some more and see if we can reach out to more of those agencies, or maybe there's another opportunity that we can help them to get folks back where they, back where they came, back where they got picked up from, if that's helpful.
Why couldn't Uber just be set up automatically?
It, it could be.
Just each time.
Or Deputy Sheriff taking it back.
I didn't, I didn't hear that, goes to a statement.
Well, the suggestion was Uber or Lyft or something like that, or, or another agency. So we really have to, we have to look at the, the use of public funds for that. It's a delicate ground that we walk on. It's really nice to be able to, to rely on the goodwill of partners to, to provide those services for us, but we can reach out to them and see if there's more opportunities.
Does Pometa Breeze have a stop anywhere near the government center?
I think they do right across the street.
Do they?
But they're not gonna take them south of the Broad.
No, yeah. At that point, not if.
No, no.
Yeah, the timing would be, would be an issue because they're not, you know, they're not stopping here every hour.
No.
Why don't, why don't we have a conversation with Chef Tanner and his agents of trying to help us resolve this issue of actually, once they're, once they're released from incarceration, then he actually provides some means of transportation to getting them back over to Hilton Head or Bluffton, wherever they came from.
We can, we can certainly have the conversation. I'm not sure where we'll, where we'll get with that.
Well, it's worth having that conversation.
Yes, sir.
No, I, I agree, Mr. Dawson, yeah.
No, it's an important issue, but.
Why can't a unmarked Deputy Sheriff take them back where they picked them up?
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
That's all you have? I thought he'd have more. You know, I wanna, I wanna just suggest, it's really nice to have a work session because our committees are so jammed in, like we're about to do three on that one day on the 26th, Finance, Facilities Council. Some of the things we brought up today, and Chuck said he'll get information, that's not stuff we can squeeze into an hour and a half meeting. So there might be certain topics on those lists, like when we talk about the lands we own and how to do parks and so, we may need to sit and just talk about one or two subjects for a period of time. Everything can't be committed because we can't get enough information.
So perhaps, there could be some calendar adjustments that come up that, that council would have to vote on your calendar, so perhaps you, you might want to consider a midterm workshop, just to have topics that you want to discuss.
Or a quarterly.
Or a quarterly workshop.
Yes.
In this type, in this type of forum. So really, this type of forum really does create the opportunity for communication and sharing of what's going on and.
I like it, yeah.
And we, I think, I think, you know, we, we used to have like a two-day retreat, which is too intense, but I think a quarterly would be good because we could gather our thoughts but not spend two days and get tired of each other.
I've seen, I've seen some two or three days. Okay, after you, the first day, I'm not sure everybody was all here right after lunch now, y'all were really quiet. But it does, it's intense, you've been here half the day yesterday and half the day again today. It's a lot of commitment and a lot of time and a lot of brain power and energy, you just burn it up thinking, so.
Just to piggyback on what Tab just said, you know, you could take something like the, the whole issue of the ferry boat, just spend the whole couple hours just talking about that whole concept and see whether that's something that we want to pursue, you know, and then move forward from there. But we just come to a meeting here and talk about it, throw it on the table and make sure we come back again and talk about it, throw it on the table and stuff, so, just kind of resolve some of those. While I got the floor, Mr. Chairman, I, I want to go to the external customers.
Yes, sir.
And you have on here improving communication.
Yes, sir.
You know, and you have the via media and technology. I, I just want to emphasize the need for people like myself who are not technologically So how do we reach everybody? And one, and one time, we had a emergency siren we talked about, you know, where is that, if there's a tornado or whatever, at least people can hear that and know what that means. I just think we just need to make sure that we can communicate with all our citizens and not take for granted that we all know how to work technology.
Yes, sir, I will, I will lean on our PIO team over there, she's hiding from me now, to help us with that communication with, with our community.
That's the wrong person.
No, but she's exactly the person. She helps me all the time.
Okay, okay.
Just a history lesson, a few years ago, we had money, grant money for a siren system throughout the county and it, for some reason, I don't know what happened, it was after Matthew and we've, I don't, I don't know what happened to it, but.
I think we have sirens put in.
We would have sirens put in, a lot of, you know, the old civil defense system, it never got put up. Where I live, I can hear the sirens from parasailing, so I'm okay, but throughout the county, I think we need that because sometimes all the other forms of communication break down. And I don't know what happened to that grant or what happened to follow-up on that.
I don't know, we'll, we'll have to dig into that and see what's there. I know our, our emergency operations center has, we use reverse 911 and reverse 911 can call back specific areas or the entire county.
In this great, but I think in some areas, you need, the more rural areas, you really need the sirens to.
Yeah. I think Savannah has.
To that point, several years back, and I can't, I can't give a specific timeframe, but we held governmental meetings and where we talked about those sirens being installed in key locations in the northern part of the county, Centennial, the Burton area, out in, out in the uppermost part, northern part of the county out here where I live, and, and we actually, they were actually funded. And to York and Alex's point, I haven't heard anything else about it as far as installation or them being in place and ready, ready to perform as, as needed.
I mean, we do get tornadoes prior, it's not just hurricane season, I mean, we've, you know, we've seen some tornadoes.
I'll have to see where you. Well, I, I don't have any knowledge of that, but we will certainly dig into it and find out if there's, if there's, if there's funding for that somewhere in our, in our present budget, or maybe there was a, some grant funding that we didn't exploit. Will they get to it and find out?
John?
Yes, sir.
One more thing before we leave this, I don't know if it fits in this area, but one of the things I've seen, one that I've heard from some people is, we have projects that we've been working on for many, many years. I'd like our council to commit to getting things resolved. Jared, are you still?
Yes, sir.
We have a working committee now for St. James and for the first time in a very long time, I think we moved it down that road and get a lot of things accomplished and get that moved where it needs to be, I don't know why it's taken 20 years to do that. So my thing is, if we can, if we're gonna, if we're gonna take on a project and talk about it, or to, your point, York, is, are we gonna talk about it again next year? I think we have a great working group, great council, great staff, and we're getting things done, and I tell you, let's use St. James as a benchmark, let's get that done.
Well, to add to that, it could be not just a benchmark, but also a, a model.
Absolutely.
You guys have a ton of meetings, like, just on normal, but if you spread up and, okay, you're on that and I think Larry, you, you go to St. James. Not everybody goes to that meeting.
Correct.
So if you have subtasks and sub-meetings, that's a normal, normal procedure, so I think that's a way to spearhead some of these projects that you really want to work hard on.
I like it. I've heard some very good things. We started those meetings and it was very contentious. As we got to the latter two now, people are really working together to get that resolved because for the first time in a long time, they're saying, hey, we've got a group of people that really want to do it and not just come back next year and say, hey, the actionable items, who's responsible, what, you know? I'm telling you, we can, we can get a lot of things done if we stay with it.
I agree. If on one of my slides over here, I have the word written down, execution, and it is that, and into my slide there for Buford County cares, BC cares, that empowering employees to do what they know is right, to, to take action within those boundaries, to execute on projects. We do all the paperwork and we get all these things done, we come through council and we get approval, and then the process drags. Some of our processes take a long time to get through for permissions and permits and all of those kinds of things, performing and executing on those projects and then reporting back that, hey, we've done this, we're doing these, that's really important. So that, that word is really valuable.
Unbelievable. One point I want to make too, Jared, to your point, Jared has a good relationship with the town and I think the way you're doing that is helping this progress, you know, to get, get some of this done, so, again, kudos to you for leading that and getting, let's get that done, so, very nice.
All right. Are you gonna type some of this up right now, you're gonna do something? So if we're gonna commit to possibly quarterly work sessions, first one would be in March. Yeah, I'm just saying, if we were to commit, but that's on your staff when you would be ready.
The budget calendar, the fifth, sixth, or seventh would be the next time we would be asking you to back together.
Well, that's for, that's for.
On the budget calendar.
That's for budget.
Is for strategic plan follow-up.
What day is that?
On the budget calendar?
Is on the budget.
Is it on council?
As a strategic plan follow-up.
I don't know if it's on council's calendar.
It's their dates. It's their dates, yeah.
That's not, what day is it?
March fifth, sixth, or seventh.
I thought those were days, you weren't sure which day, did you pick a day?
Yes, so we would like for, if y'all could let us know what day you want to pick of those days, is Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday?
I think I have a trauma seven.
You're excused. We'll, we'll work together with the clerk's office and, and the calendar, it's, it's very, our calendar's published, it's voted on by council, so we need to make sure that we do it right, so we'll work with it, with the clerk's office and make sure that the calendar is, is appropriate.
I just don't want to lose possibly a quarterly work session.
Right.
To follow up on all these topics or some of the topics, but again, it's up to you and the staff when you would be prepared to do the follow-up conversation.
So what we'll do today, so this is the last slide that we have, Ms. Ward over here's been taking feverish notes. I've collected some things here and the great thing is we have all this on video as well, so we'll go back, we'll review those comments, we'll write down those comments, we'll turn your comments into actions, we'll find those places where actions need dollars, and then we can work those dollars into our budget to present to you, and when you see those in, in there, you'll know that, that those actions that brought those dollars came from your voices. So when we put those actions into dollars and put them in the budget, then we can execute and make things happen. So this is a, this is a big circle that we get from the vision into a plan back to action.
Is this somewhere in there?
What's it, what I just said?
Fleet management, no, is this anywhere in your plan? Fleet management, we talked about it, I don't want to drop that either.
It is in the budget, it's in our, in our budget calendar.
Don't want to lose that.
In our, in our budget discussions, yes. So what'll happen after today is we'll collate all this information, we'll develop those, those plans and those objectives, send those back out to you so you don't have to come back here, we'll send them to you for your review, for your comment, we can make some edits, and then we'll end up with a short-term and long-term strategic plan that includes some of the discussion points we talked about today and the priorities you identified that you want us to work on for the next, for the next budget year. And I would say most of these short-term planning in the county is a year or two because things take a long time to, to move. This is a busy, busy, busy place. So much happens.
John, I have.
Yes, sir.
Actually have four more small things on my list and then I'm, then I'm all done. So.
You said the last.
I know, I know. That was for that section. So, I know I brought this up at one point, but is there any way we start getting the backup material sooner, you know, maybe a week ahead of time? Because trying to read it on the weekend, and thankfully there's multiple readings.
We have talked, we have talked about that. When it comes to the council meeting, the council meeting should.
When it comes to the council meeting, the council meeting should be able to be presented to you, because it's a culmination of what we discussed at committee meetings. That should not be a problem. The committee meetings, we do understand, we're putting volumes of things together, so that can't be a guarantee, but certainly something that we are talking about, trying to get it out earlier.
And then, is there any way we could potentially add an open discussion at the end of meetings, or a new items setting or something like that, instead of doing the, I mean, still do the agenda setting, obviously, but at the end of our regular council meetings, have an open discussion about certain topics? Or is that something anybody would want to do? Or would you rather have it in a work session?
The purpose, yeah, that would be at a work session. The purpose of a council meeting is to take action on what you have done in your committees. That's where the real work is. People mistake our council, council meeting as something that, this is where I'm going to learn all the information. No, you're not, because our committee system was set up specifically so that we could have lengthy discussions about topics.
And then, last two things. One, Alice, I think you brought this up as well, interview the appointees prior to approval.
I have in the past, I have in the past, yeah.
And then also hold more joint meetings with the municipalities. I think that will help with, you know...
Municipalities.
We haven't done any of those.
With what?
Well, certainly, we've tried to reach out, because we have all new leaders in our municipalities. So we've reached out to them. We're going to do that again at Soloco, because we're partial to Soloco, some attend, some don't attend, so we can't guarantee that if we hold a joint meeting, they're going to come, but we're going to try that.
And then the city Beaufort Town of Port Royal always has quarterly joint meetings, and any of us that want to go, of course, can go to that, too.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah.
I need to get those on my calendar.
And what about the start, were you hearing the same thing about start time that I did? About starting at six?
I hear it, too, because Southside, you just can't get here.
No. I don't hear it at all.
You can't get here at five.
My district's too busy playing golf and going on death.
Oh, that reminds me of one thing. You had golf course on there somewhere?
Yeah.
That would be a big note.
No, yeah, me, too.
That's a huge drain of money, and you got a million golf courses.
Me, too. You buy a golf course.
You can have one of ours.
Oh, okay, yes. That was the recognition side of things. That was recognition, so I was assuming it was...
I mean, there's several that are closed, too.
Greatly reminded me, that was on my slide when I, when I asked the question in the survey, what do other counties have that you would like? I don't know what some of...
Maybe disc golf.
Splashback was there.
Yeah, disc golf.
Well, disc golf would be okay.
There's going to be one at Southside. Southside Park, they're going to put one in.
You know, buses and splashbacks.
Yeah.
Fairies and splashbacks.
John?
Yes, sir.
There are four council members here today that are new, and this is our first retreat.
We're not new anymore.
Well, we're not new, but it's new, this is our first retreat. I'll tell you, thank you and the staff for, everybody here for putting this together. It was exciting, even though you felt we went to sleep in the afternoon. But thank you for putting this together. It was very nice.
The energy, oh, you're welcome. Thank you. I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate you being involved. And, you know, my vision for this meeting kind of came true, so, you know, so I'm thankful for that. We, the staff and I really wanted to hear what you had to say and collect your input and turn that into a strategic plan for the upcoming year and for years to follow. And I think we can get there. So thanks so much for your time and attention. I appreciate your day. Look at us at 2:23. It's scheduled to, 2:30, and I, I've stretched it to three, just in case. So we're right on time. If you think of anything or you're inspired by another thought on your drive home, send it to me.
It's your fault.
Capture it.